A meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, December 7, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you take the role or call the role, please?
Tim Hale. Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee.
Here.
Robert Yunt.
Here.
Moki Tu.
Here.
Jesse Sumner.
Here.
Ron Bernier.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anything the members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Oh, yes, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to pull Resolution 21-134, which is regarding the Wester Center project. I would like to pull it from the consent agenda so that we can have a discussion and an update on that from Ada. And that would, I would request that that be done following audience participation. We have a few folks from Anchorage that'll allow them to make their way back, back to town.
Is there any objections? Council Assemblywoman Nowers, did you have a comment?
No, sorry.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there any other, yeah, council or Assemblywoman?
Yeah, it is AM 21-121. This has to do with the consultant, the landfill engineer kind of thing. And I'd like that to be discussed later.
Okay, do you have a special place that? Did she say a special place or do you just automatically put it someplace?
It automatically goes right after the consent agenda. The resolution that Mr. Brown was asking about is just so the people here from Ada can drive back to Anchorage before the roads get even worse.
But it doesn't require from the assembly person a specific location? Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor, you're calling that?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull from the consent agenda Resolution 21-124 and IM 21-240, as well as Resolution 21-125. And it's attached IM and AM 21-118.
Okay, any other changes that any, anyone, either, either one of the assembly members online? Okay, hearing that they don't have anything, is there any objections to any of those being changed? Okay. Ready? Okay, Bill, all stand, please. And Bill Kinney, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Special orders of the day, oh, I'm sorry, can I ask you to rise again? Today is Pearl Harbor Day and I'd just like to have a moment of silence to honor that action in our country. Is there any objections to the appointment of Assemblymember Sumner to Deputy Mayor?
If I could hold on just a second, Ms. Mayor, I'm sorry. I am hearing from Assemblymember Yunt and Hale that they cannot hear anything. If you can take a brief at ease real quick.
To this Nexus Conference Manager, please enter the conference, joining conference.
Assemblymember Yunt and Hale, can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you, yes, yes ma'am.
Thank you for letting me know.
Okay, so I don't know how much you have heard. We did have some items that were pulled from the consent agenda. Were you able to hear any of that action? And if not, would you like the clerk to go over all of those items first?
I heard the one pulled by the administration and the one pulled by Assemblymember McKee.
Okay.
Okay, just to go over for Assemblymember Hale and Assemblymember Yunt, the ones that were pulled, and I'm going to go through them all, Resolution 21-124, Resolution 21-125, Resolution 21-134, AM 21-118, and AM 21-121.
Okay, so those were the items that were pulled from the consent agenda. Then we had the pledge and we had a moment of silence honoring Pearl Harbor Day today. And I was just in the midst of asking if there was any objections to the appointment of Assemblymember Sumner to Deputy Mayor. Does any of the assembly have an objection to that appointment? Okay, hearing no objection, the appointment passes. The next item, are there any changes to the minutes that have been presented? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. And then we have, you have the agency reports. Do we have any reports from the city? Okay, do we have a report from the school district? No, okay. Do we have a report from the state of Alaska? Whoa, hi, Todd.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My first time to address you, congratulations. And congratulations to other new assembly members as well. It's good to be here tonight and I don't have a whole lot to report other than to just say that we are very pleased with some of the pushback on President Biden's vaccine mandates, stay on the OSHA requirement, which affects businesses here in Alaska, as well as the CMS mandate, which put Matsui Regional in a difficult position with whether or not they were going to require employees to be vaccinated. So that has also been stayed and I spoke with the hospital management today, members of the management, and they were very relieved with the stay of that, of that mandate. So there's one more that we are watching, which is the mandate for federal contract workers. And that is still being, still being heard and going through the process. The, the governor will be releasing his budget according to his constitutional requirement before, on December 15. I appreciate the cities and also the borough in communicating with me what your priorities are. I've forwarded those to our budget team and they are giving those careful considerations. So thank you, Manager Brown, for, for getting those to me. And then also looking forward to, hopefully, I'm almost certain that you'll be having a visit from DOT Commissioner Anderson, not, not this next week, but the week after, the 16th, 17th, hopefully, if all goes well. So I'm working with Manager Brown to facilitate a drive along with the commissioner and then also a meeting at the Borough Building. I don't know if assembly members will be invited, but I'm sure three or fewer probably could come to that debrief. So if you're interested, you might want to put your name in the hat right now with Manager Brown for that. So I don't have anything else tonight, but I'm looking forward to Ada's presentation. And if anybody has any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Very well, sir, no questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have a safe trip home. Okay, um, we, there was a joint Assembly School Board Committee on School Issues and Councilwoman, see, I did it again, Assemblywoman Nowers, would you like to report?
Mayor Harppler called me Assemblywoman Showers for a long time, so you're, you're way ahead. The, we had a meeting on Monday, mostly discussion of the meeting we have coming up this coming Tuesday with the Joint Assembly School Board. You should have received an email with the items we're going to talk about, but we're going to get an update on the annual budget, Houston Middle School, a COVID update, road bond update, including the status of Seward Meridian, and then also for consideration is a resolution supporting user-friendly, transparent healthcare pricing in the All Payer Claims database, which I think we've talked about a little bit, but talk about it more on, at that meeting, and that's the full report.
Thank you. And are there any public relations reports? Who would bring those? Oh, assembly members, okay. All ready? And Mr. Brown, do you, and before Mr. Brown presents his report, I'd like to have a round of applause. Today is his one-year anniversary for bringing at the Borough. And there's no resignation on the agenda.
I'm a survivor, some of you are laughing. All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple things, I want to start with a good thing this evening. Many employees across the Borough, again, participated in the Matsui Borough Employees' Association's annual Thanksgiving food drive. Special thanks to Shaw Avril, who has led this effort for several years, coordinating volunteers and collecting turkeys and all the trimmings. Thanks to the employees for providing 60 families a Thanksgiving meal this past holiday. So I just wanted to say thank you to our folks for doing that. Another comment for the assembly, you'll see under introductions for December 21st, our annual review of the schedule of rates and fees, Resolution 21-130. We're doing it a little bit differently this year. In the past, we put it on as a resolution on one meeting, it's introduced and we just have to take action, which can be a lot, so we chose to introduce it so it's on the record for a couple of weeks. Assembly members have the opportunity to consider, you know, different aspects of that. I will tell you, according to the deputy manager, there are far fewer changes to the schedule than there have been traditionally in the past. So I would encourage the assembly to consider the resolution and discuss any potential amendments with staff in advance of the next meeting. That would allow us to kind of talk about revenue projections if you have questions and stuff like that, so that we're not trying to develop amendments on the floor on the 21st. So you and the public have the opportunity to review that for the next couple of weeks prior to that public hearing on December 21st. And then my last item, Madam Mayor, is a request to set up another meeting, because I know how we love meetings, a strategic planning special meeting, and I would propose Saturday, February 12th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, ideally at the Menard, but we'll have to work and see if that facility is available. It's very similar to what we did this past year. It's a great opportunity to, because we can get the advertisement out and talk about strategic issues, get updates on things that don't necessarily come in the way of legislation, and it provides me an, or provides you an opportunity to give me direction around some of the things that you would like to see us work on. We'll talk about things that have been accomplished over the past year and kind of what are some of those strategic issues that you want to chart forward on over the next year and beyond. So I would propose, if there's no objection, of course, to Saturday, February 12th.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, do you mind if I take you, Assemblyman Hale, please? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to note that I will be home January 4th through the 17th, and then I'll be back on the smoke until February 28th.
Would, would there be an opportunity to, no, because he would be gone. Did I understand you correctly, sir? You would be gone then until February 28th? Did I understand you correctly, Assemblyman?
Yes, ma'am. Six weeks up here and then I will be home again for another two weeks, the first through the 14th of March, and then back here for another six weeks. And then the season will be over and I'll be home all summer.
Okay. All righty, um, so what would you like to do, sir? Would you like to have it later then, or will we have, you know, internet connections to be able to participate? Or what, what is the normal? Do we try to accommodate everyone? Is that what we normally try to do? Go ahead, sir.
Madam Mayor, I would prefer folks be in attendance. That's a lot easier. It's hard to hold a six-hour meeting or something telephonically. I, I would also be open to March, Saturday, March, is that right? March 5th? Or is that, let me get to the right month. Yeah, March 5th could be an alternative. We just typically like to not get too late in the year because we kick into the budget cycle. You've got budget presentations, public hearings, and all that kind of stuff that go April, May. But I think Saturday, March 5th would probably work at face value. I haven't done a detailed dive, but that seems like a reasonable date if the assembly's open to that.
Yes, Assemblywoman McKee, I'm sorry.
I got to check the date when spring break is, because we often leave the state, or certainly at least the Borough, because it usually, I'm thinking 5th of March. It's, it's right around in that time, so I'm not sure that that would work for me.
Okay. And Assemblywoman Nowers, I'm sorry.
The March 5th would work for me, the other day didn't.
Okay, and would the 12th work also?
The 12th would also work.
Okay, thank you. I jumped over you and.
Are you talking about March 12th or February 12th does not work, March 5th does? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what is like the 19th of February look like? But that isn't a good time, sir?
I'm okay with that. We just looked at that, that President's holidays, that Monday, so it's a long weekend. So we were trying to stay off of that and away from Valentine's Day and we could also do it the last week in January, potentially, the 29th could work. I was trying to leave some time between that and the port special meeting, so if there were follow-up items that we get out of the 11th, we have a little bit of time to do something with that potentially and then kind of come back as a follow-up. But I think we could probably make January 29th work as well. Again, open whatever works best for the assembly.
Okay, does any of the assembly have a conflict with January 29th?
I can get feedback from Ms. McKee on the March 5th, not, not at this moment, but later. Then we could potentially look at January 29th as an alternate.
Okay.
Is that reasonable?
Okay, all right, good, all righty.
Get all that, Madam Clerk.
She's never written so, she's never written so many notes in her life, is what she said right tonight to me.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Attorney's report? Ready for the attorney's reports?
Yes, I do, briefly. Mrs. Mayor, members of the Assembly, on the agenda, it'll be a standing item for as long as the case is going on. As you're all aware, we filed suit against the Alaska State Redistricting Board last Thursday. The summons, so when you file a lawsuit with the court, they issue, they give you a case number and they hand you back a summons. That summons then needs to be served on the defendant and that's what gets the case going. The summons was given back to Borough's outside counsel today. There is no judge assigned. The court had issued an order, administrative order, about two or three weeks ago, basically saying that the judges, judge to hear these cases won't be assigned until the deadline for filing these cases is over, which is this coming Friday. So summons was just issued today. That summons needs to be served on the Alaska Redistricting Board, Lieutenant Governor and Attorney General's Office. So there is nothing to report. There, there's been no action in court at all because the case hasn't really started. I expect probably next week or the week thereafter, there may be more. So we don't need to have the executive session tonight. There's nothing to report. I do, I will, you know, coordinate with the clerk. In terms of the agenda item, it will be there for as long as this case is going on, unless I'm otherwise directed by the assembly to, to stop putting it on the agenda. And then I was also asked to briefly speak to, mostly for the benefit of the new members who are here, who maybe haven't seen this kind of thing before. In 2006, the Alaska Supreme Court ruled that any cases, any laws that affect planning or land use regulations need to be considered by the Planning Commission before the assembly votes on them. And it's not that the Planning Commission can hold you hostage by saying, oh, we won't consider that, therefore you can't vote on it. The Planning Commission needs to be given the opportunity to comment. So when you see on the end of this agenda, these referrals, that's what that means. It means that the assembly is basically telling the Planning Commission, they're going to be considering these items, but before considering these items, you're giving the opportunity for the Planning Commission to comment on what these items are. The Borough Code specifies 90 days or other date as set by the referral, so the assembly can always change it. But these are not up for discussion item, while people will certainly talk about them like happened at the earlier meeting, they're not up for discussion and debate like on their merits tonight. It's only up to whether or not you want to refer it to the Planning Commission, and that's what's happening. And then automatically, they will come back in whatever timeframe the assembly sets. The default rule under the code is 90 days. So, and that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Any of the assembly have any questions on his report? Everybody understands what we're bound by law to do? Okay, good. Madam Clerk, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. The clerk's report is in your red folder. It has the upcoming meeting schedule, the, and the quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial update. And also, the manager's office has been working with the LIO office to set up a meeting, joint meeting with the state delegation, and they have, the state, the LIO office has suggested January 7th at 10:00 AM over at the LIO. Is that a meeting the assembly wants to schedule?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So that, again, for new members, that's a meeting where we take the state priorities that you'll be considering tonight in resolution, and that's where we sit down with the state delegation, present those priorities, have a discussion with them, answer any questions that they may have. Before COVID, that was an annual event. I think we missed it one year or last year, so we're looking to set something up again where we can just have the assembly engaged directly with the state delegation before the session, the next session starts. Thank you.
Is there any objection? Is there any objection to the meeting on the 7th? January 7th? Okay, Madam Clerk, the meeting I didn't see on here was January 11th with the assembly regarding the port. Should that one have been listed?
Yes, it should be, it should be. And I'll send out a new, new meeting schedule tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
And then also, the assembly does have a joint meeting with the school board next Tuesday. Brenda did email that out, the agenda out to you today, however, she didn't include the resolution. So I'll be getting that out to you tomorrow via email. And also, I would like to congratulate Brenda Henry for being elected to the vice pres, to be the first vice president of the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks at our annual conference about two weeks ago.
Does that mean she gets to bake the cookies and bring them next meeting?
Yes.
All righty. So the next items on the agenda is the citizens and the other correspondence. Are there any comments on the citizens and other correspondence that has, was presented to you? Hearing none, they are as presented. And Madam Clerk, we're ready for information memorandums. Would you read those into the record, please?
I am 21-248, reporting the conclusion of contract for bid number 19115B with North Star Excavation and Asphalt Incorporated and the final contract amount of $1,167,555.86 for the 2019 roads paving project.
Is there any comments on the IM? Hearing none, the IM is presented. Okay, persons to be heard? Okay, persons to be heard? We do not have anybody scheduled for persons to be heard. So we now have reached public hearings. You have three minutes to testify. For people who are testifying by phone, once you hear the item, you want to speak into the record, please hit star three and you will hear. And, and your hand has been raised. You will know it's your time to speak. When you hear, your line has been unmuted. Please state your name for the record and spell your last name. And we have a, let's see, the first item. Um, Madam Clerk, would you read that into the record, please?
Ordinance 21109, an ordinance accepting and appropriating a grant from the Alaska State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for equipment and training. With accompanying Resolution 21118, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for the Alaska State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management grant for equipment and training.
Is there a staff report?
Through the Mayor to the Assembly, Cheyenne Heindl, Finance Director. Um, this grant award is from the state of Alaska. It's to be used for such things as improving the security of our emergency services facilities, uh, which includes installations of electronic doors with locking mechanisms, cameras, uh, and related servers to monitor those cameras. It also includes training of our EMS staff and equipment, um, for the CERT team.
Sorry. Okay. Alrighty. I will open the public hearing. Um, do we have any, we do not have anyone signed up that is present. Do we have anybody? We have four people online. Um, so I guess we will go to the online people first, Caleb. So if you are online and you have pressed star three, please state your name and spell your last name and then give your testimony. Thank you.
Hello, I am Brian Emerson, E.M.E.R.S.O.N. My wife Laura and I are full-time residents of Trail Lake, near the base of Mount Little Susitna in Fish and Game Zone 16B. We have owned our property since 2007. We vote and we pay property taxes. We encourage the Assembly to reject Phase 3 Susitna Access Road MOU for both personal reasons and others, based on many deleterious impacts of mines and roads in other remote parts of Alaska. Personally, the West Susitna Access Road is expected to pass close to our quiet, remote property. We're concerned about how it might negatively affect our quality of life and that of the wildlife that lives in and migrates through this region. We are naturally also concerned about a corresponding decrease in property values and the quietude, attractive views and wild animal sightings for which we bought this property and spent over decades developing it into a home where we...
Sir, can I interrupt you just a minute? Um, this, this public hearing has to do with ordinance 21-109 and Resolution 21-118. And those two have to do with the Division of Homeland Security. It doesn't have yet, there will be a time later for audience participation where you will be able to testify regarding the subject you want to talk on. So I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear to you.
Thank you. I apologize.
No problem, sir. Thank you for taking the time. Um, Caleb, can we find out for sure if, if any of the rest of them are really on the, they're, they're on a different subject? Okay. And he won't know? Okay.
Hope they all lowered their hands, so we're good.
Oh, okay. So they all got the message then? Okay. Alrighty. So is there anyone here, even though you didn't sign up on the signup sheet, that would like to testify regarding ordinance 21-019 or Resolution 21-118? And if you are, just come forward. Okay. I don't see anybody. Do, um, I would always ask if the council has objection? Do we ask that here or will I just do it?
For public hearings, you would just do that? If the Assembly chose to extend a public hearing, they would just make a motion?
Okay. Alrighty. So I will go ahead then and close that, uh, public hearing. And Deputy Mayor, officially now.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 21-109 and Resolution 21-118. That's read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Okay. Hearing no objection, the legislation passes. The next public hearing we have is on ordinance 21-110. And Madam Clerk, would you read that legislation into the record?
An ordinance approving and appropriation of $574,786 from the area-wide fund balance for bridge and railroad crossing major maintenance and repair and the desk control program, 50% road service area construction, 50% desk control. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this pub, public hearing, press star three.
Okay. Just so everyone understands, uh, this is ordinance 21-110. Uh, staff report?
Through the Mayor to the Assembly Members, Finance Director Cheyenne Heindl. This, um, ordinance is recognizing that we collected more motor vehicle registration taxes than we budgeted for in fiscal year '21. And by code, we are to move that money into the bridges and railroad crossing major maintenance, desk control project. And that's what this is doing.
Okay. I will... Everybody okay? All right. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 21-110. Is there anyone here presently that would like to testify regarding this ordinance? Don't see anybody. No, and nobody online. Okay. Um, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 21-110.
Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Okay. Hearing no objection, the legislation passes. The next item on our agenda is ordinance 21-111 and Resolution 21-119. Madam Clerk, would you read the legislation?
An ordinance approving appropriation from the Willow Fire Service Area Fund Balance to an existing project for an underground water tank, paving and gravel pad at Willow Station 12-5 with accompanying Resolution 21119, a resolution approving the amended budget for an underground water tank, paving and gravel pad at Willow Station 12-5. Is there a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Assembly Members. Congratulations to the Mayor, newly appointed Assembly Members, and also Jesse Sumner, his reappointment. So, um, so this is a, uh, this project was put on hold initially because of the cost. What we're doing, it's a, there's no water in that area. So for the fire department to utilize, so that's a, kind of a ding on our ISO rating. Water source is the number one thing that they get us on. So there's, when we had the last year ISO or a couple of years ago ISO rating, this was one of the areas that was noted. So this will be a water tank. It has to be a minimum of 33,000 gallons to be accredited. And then also the gravel pad and paving for the fire trucks to be able to have safe access on there. So that's what this is. Uh, the Fire Service Area Board has asked to approve this and they voted unanimously. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. Very well, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 21-111 and Resolution 21-119. Anyone in the audience that would like to testify on either one of these pieces of legislation? Nobody online. Okay. No, still see anybody? Okay. I will close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor? Oh.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move to adopt ordinance 21-111 and Resolution 21-119.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Okay. Hearing no objection, the legislation passes. The next item is ordinance 21-112. And Madam Clerk, would you read that into the record, please?
An ordinance amending MSB 150810C, compensation of the Planning Commission and amending MSB 431030A, compensation of the Plating Board, based on the Commission on Salaries and Emoluments recommending an increase to the per-meeting compensation for both boards.
Is there a staff report? Oh, you? Okay.
The Commission met on, on the request of the Assembly. And one of the things they did look at is the Planning Commission compensation and the Plating Board compensation. It has been $50 since 1991. This is bringing it up at, to the, to the $100 that was recommended by the Salaries and Emoluments Committee, and this would be per meeting.
Okay. And is that effective immediately or the first of the year or is that ahead of time?
This would be effective immediately.
As soon as the legislation is passed? Okay. Alrighty. This is, do we have anybody sign? No, we do not have anybody signed up. We have anybody? No. Anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this piece of legislation? Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, uh, I move to adopt ordinance 21-112 and I speak to it.
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
So, so I think this is, uh, more than justified. Uh, I don't know if anybody here has ever gone to one of the Planning or Plating Board meetings, but, uh, they, they have a extensive amount of work they have to do in preparation for every meeting. I mean, the packets are quite large and, um, having served on the Wasilla Planning Commission myself, I, I know that it's a lot of work to be paid $50. And I don't think they do it for the money, but I think $100 per meeting is more than fair for those folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this piece of legislation?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank Assemblymember Sumner and the Commission for bringing this forward because, and in case anybody's thinking they'd make a lot of money, I think that works out to maybe $6 an hour, uh, when you figure it out. So long overdue and, and glad to just throw a little bit of a bone to the folks who are taking their time to serve on those boards.
Any further discussion? Okay. Is there any objection? Okay. Hearing no objection, the legislation passes. The next item is ordinance 21-113. Madam Clerk, would you read it into the record?
An ordinance accepting and appropriating $10 million from the Alaska State Department of Commerce, Community and Economic Development for pavement rehabilitation through the Matsu Population Corridor with accompanying Resolution 21122, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget and authorizing the Borough Manager to enter into a grant agreement for pavement rehabilitation through the Matsu Population Corridor.
Mr. Brown, you have?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so the state appropriated $10 million in grant funding to the Matsu Borough to address pavement and re, roadway rehabilitation and preservation and other areas of need as determined by the Borough. Uh, staff provided an option, which is in the legislation that's published tonight, that centered around improvements to high-traffic roadways primarily in the core area. We also prepared two amendments, which I believe Mr. Young is sponsored one tonight or will be sponsoring one tonight. Uh, it, to amend the legislation to apply this funding to the recently voter-approved transportation package. So the package that went on the ballot that was approved for 61 million, this, a good portion of this could be out allotted to that work and, and provide partial funding. And then the third, the third amendment or option that we prepared was legislation to disperse this equitably to the road service areas. So, uh, this work can include a multitude of things in terms of, uh, you know, rehabilitation and preservation. Uh, we've checked with the Department of Commerce for allowable expenses under this grant. Uh, we think it's pretty broad, but they have advised that we should stick to existing roadways. In other words, if we're gonna go and do, you know, create a new connector, like in Texel, at Texel, for example, we would want to use another funding source and not claim reimbursement under this grant. But we did check with DCCED and we have that, uh, that determination in writing.
Okay. Um, and that, you're the staff and the report, right? Nobody else? Okay. I will now go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 21-113 and Resolution 21-122. Do we have, we do not have anybody signed up either place? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on either one of these pieces of legislation? Okay. And for everybody that hasn't found it in your red folder is, um, the amendments. I believe that, um, Assemblymember Young is going to propose. Are you, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to propose that and if I could speak to it, please?
Okay. And I'm sorry, sir, I jumped the gun. I need to have the Deputy Mayor, um, make the motion to approve this so that it's on the floor, so then you can make the amendment. My apologies for calling on you too soon. Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, do we close the public hearing on this?
Uh, I don't know. I can do it again.
I, I move to adopt ordinance 21-113 and Resolution 21-122.
Okay. Is there discussion on? Is motion to move? Okay. Now, sir, um, Assemblymember Young, I will recognize you. And again, my apologies for jumping the gun there.
That's quite all right. So, yeah, if I could speak to the amendment briefly. I, my reasoning for this is, is, um, the staff at the Matsu Borough did an outstanding job, uh, earlier this year of bringing us forth a package that they felt were the most important projects in the community that needed to be done. And then we vetted that. Us Assemblymembers went through it. We pared it down. We made it substantially smaller than it was, uh, in the beginning. And we really determined as a group that those were the most important projects. I'm very grateful, uh, to the state for bringing this money forth. Um, I do want to use it responsibly and, and, and do it in a way that, you know, really supports the community. And I think the community, there's been so much involvement to get to that package that we created, the $61 million package. So what I did is I asked Manager Brown if we could use some or all of the money to chip away at that bond package. My dream would be that we don't have to sell bonds and then we could do this in-house ourselves without raising the mill rate. Uh, that's yet to be determined. I'm working on that currently and will continue to do so. But, so Mike went to the state and worked with them to determine if we could use the money for that. And if we did, how could we use it and on what projects? He's done that. He spoke to that. Um, there is quite a bit more money that we, you know, this would work for way more than just, uh, the amount given to us. So that won't be an issue. And again, like I said, Manager Brown spoke to that. So I hope everybody will support me in this. I mean, there was a lot of effort that went into, uh, the road package. Um, it is the ones that the Borough Staff and then the Borough Assembly and our voters determined to be the most important. And so, uh, yeah, that's it. I hope everyone supports me on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Clerk, would you read the amendments into the record, please?
Assemblymember Young, I'll go ahead and read it into the record for you. This is to amend Resolution...
Thank you.
Resolution 21122 with the accompanying I, and IM 21236. And the resolutions, strike the scope of work in its entirety and insert in its place. This funding will be applied to the standalone Felton Street project and the transportation bond projects listed in Proposition 1, except for the multimodal Wasilla Depot project approved by Borough voters on November 2nd, 2021. 1.5 million of this funding will be allocated to the Felton Street project with the remainder allocated to the bond projects based upon a percentage of project cost to total transportation pod, patch, package costs, excuse me. In the IM, starting on the second page, strike the wording, starting at "staff has developed", strike all the projects listed on pages two and three and strike the last paragraph. And if you need a visual, you can see attached. And insert in its place, this funding will be applied to the standalone Felton Street project and the transportation bond projects, projects listed in Proposition 1, except for the multimodal Wasilla Depot project approved by Borough voters on November 2nd, 2021. 1.5 million of this funding will be allocated to the Felton Street project with the remainder allocated to the bond projects based upon a percentage of project cost to total transportation package costs.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Assemblymember?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, uh, thank you to Assemblymember... I just want to say thank you to Assemblymember Young for bringing this amendment and that I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor? Or did you? Is that the order? Okay.
So through the mayor to the manager, or perhaps the, perhaps Director Dolan, if we do this, will there be sufficient money in, say, like the RSA 25 budget or the RSA 28 budget to do any of these pavement repair projects?
Do you want to take that one, Mr. Dolan, or do you want me to take a shot at it? I think that, I'll say this to begin. The reason we put this package together for the road service areas was recognizing that some of these larger roads, it's difficult for an RSA to generate enough capital to do a large pavement preservation project for a substantial portion of the road. So if it's kind of the, if the project goes to the top of the list and sits there for a number of years, it's possible that capital would eventually be generated. But we recognized if you're really wanting to do this expeditiously, we need to find a way to create a match. So that's why we developed this strategy to give the Assembly three viable options to consider. I think we wouldn't have put them before you if we didn't think there was merit to all three options. Will this delay the RSA's ability to do pavement preservation on some of these roads? Absolutely. I don't know that we can nail down the exact timeframe that, like, RSA 25 would be able to afford this project or a project, and I'll kind of pause there and see if Terry has anything that he might want to add.
Terry Dolan, Director of Public Works. So I concur with the manager. It's very difficult to predict precisely, but these funds would have accelerated these pavement repair projects. So what you'll see the road service areas do, at least on the roads that they're responsible for, is to continue to try and extend the life with them of those roads with patches until such time as the need bubbles to the top of their list for their capital funds. And they'll probably, in most cases, do it in smaller segments than they would have if these funds became available to them.
Okay. All righty. And Assemblywoman Nowitzki, did you have a question also or discussion?
Yeah, just that I know when we passed the road bond package or the voters passed the road bond package for $61 million when we were talking about it, what we told them is that it would come out of property taxes unless we could find other sources of funding, and that we would work hard to do that. So this is another source of funding that we can use towards that road bond package to pay for the projects the voters approved without going to the property tax owner. So I support this legislation and appreciate Assemblymember Young putting it forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion from Assemblymembers? So now, since we have people online, how do we vote now for the passage of this?
You would still ask if there's any objection?
Okay.
And if you end up hearing objection, then we would take a vote, and I would take a voice vote from them, too.
Okay.
But everybody else in the room would still use the electronic voting.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is there any objections to this amendment, to these pieces of legislation? Okay. So now we're back on the main motion as amended. Discussion on the main motion as amended. Is there any objection to the main motion as amended passing? So the legislation passes. The next item, then, is ordinance 21-114, an ordinance amending MSB 3.08.220. Oh, I'm sorry, you're supposed to be reading. I'm so used to doing that, but go ahead. No, I would gladly share.
An ordinance many MSB 3.08220 solicitation and acceptance of bid and MSB 3.08260 competitive sealed proposals negotiated procurement. Staff report, sir?
All right. To the mayor and the Assemblymembers, I'm Russ Kraft. I'm the purchasing director for the Borough. The legislation before you actually modifies code to bring it in alignment with what we have been doing for about the past two years. Prior to the COVID incidence, we had begun exploring in July of 2019 the use of an electronic distribution system for our bids and proposals. At that point, we were using it for One Direction and One Direction only to push our documents out to the bidding community to allow them to download them and to submit questions to us and for us to get information out to them during the active solicitation period. In March of 2020, when COVID arrived and we began to lock down all of the Borough buildings and reduce the movement of personnel in, we began to use Bonfire, which is our electronic system, to its full potential, which is to push out our documents and then to turn around and receive bids and proposals in through an electronic system. Now, that was done through a manager's waiver, and that waiver addressed these two sections of code that we're looking at today. And the two pieces of that are the requirement that I utilize a local newspaper to advertise and that a bid or a proposal has to be physically handed to me. We polled our bidders and our proposers to see who was actually going to the newspaper to get notification of Borough work. Two percent of the people that were submitting and participating in Borough business were relying on a newspaper for notifications. The rest of them were relying on a Borough webpage or third-party systems. We have a lot of people that pick up our bids, and they repost them, and they charge a fee to these bidders to go ahead and download these documents. What we have in place is free. We pay a small fee annually to use it, but the bidders can go ahead and access all of these documents and submit bids and proposals directly to us for no cost at all. The bidders are notified via email. They choose to sign up. They can select which types of bids that they would like to see, and they go ahead then, and like I said, they develop the bids and they submit these to us. Some of the benefits to doing this are, the big one is the cost savings. The Borough solicits, well, the cost of advertiser solicitations is about $40,000 a year. Bonfire costs is $13,500. So there's an immediate savings right there. Another added benefit is it's increasing the competitive environment for us. Competition is good. Competition is what drives the cost of goods and services down, and we are reaching many, many more bidders. The number of bids that we're getting are coming up. Just as an example, in the last 300 solicitations that we've put out, we've received over 1,000 bids back to us. We're averaging just over three responses, and a lot of those, the road bids, we're getting eight, nine proposers, or eight or nine bidders that are coming back and competing for this. So we're seeing the numbers go down. We're reducing the incidence of people that want to bid with us, but they miss the time deadline. We receive bids in the past. We received bids from people dropping them off, but we also received bids via Postal Service, DHL, FedEx, UPS, and there was nothing worse that could happen in a day than to open up a bid and then have a bid delivered after the time that it's due. I can't accept them. I mean, Borough Code prevents us from accepting that. So the ability to submit electronically is key. Going back to the cost, just to give you a rough estimate of how this works, the cost to advertise a bid in the newspaper is about $225. If I distribute the cost of our electronic platform over an annual number of bids that are put out, it costs $77. So it's a huge savings. And in addition to that, it's a efficiency savings for us. Proposals are scored electronically. They're distributed electronically rather than producing these large paper documents. The system forces evaluators to put in comments to justify their ratings when they're scoring these proposals. And by doing that, it gives us the ability to provide feedback to the proposals that don't win so that they can improve their proposals next time. You know, everybody's looking to try to get that competitive edge, and Bonfire gives us a good way of collecting those documents and forcing people to put it in writing so that we can turn around and provide that to the proposers that are interested. What we're asking to do here by eliminating the requirement to advertise in the paper and to allow the use of electronic submissions is a trend that has started in governments about five years ago. It's really catching up steam now. The majority of entities within the state are now pushing out, and about half of them are going ahead and receiving bids and proposals electronically. Everybody's moving into this direction because it expands the pool of potential bidders. We're getting interest from a lot more companies in the lower 48, especially on supply-type items. One very recent one that we put out for street sign items, we saved 20% because a company out of Portland is supplying our street sign items as opposed to a company that's in Alaska. That translates into about $20,000 just on that one little job right there. So we're getting that interest from outside, which is directly translating into savings to the taxpayers. So I guess in summary, the use of the electronic platform has increased our own vendor base, increased competition, and it's driving down cost-saving money. So if you have any questions?
Didn't have the thing on. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 21-114. Do we have a sign-up sheet? We do not. Do we have anybody? No? Okay. Okay, sure. Come on, Elizabeth.
My name is Esther Huddleston. I know the Borough is trying to save money by accepting bids in the lower 48, but I think it's important for the Borough to support local businesses, even though it might be cheaper to get a bid from the lower 48. I think it would be beneficial to our community to try to support companies in our state. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Esther. Anyone else? So I will close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. So I will reopen the public hearing. And then I believe we have somebody online. Okay, if you will go ahead and state your name, spell your last name, and give us your testimony, and this is on ordinance 21-114.
Yeah, my name is Tran Smith, S-M-Y-T-H. I agree wholeheartedly with the previous commenter. I think that anyone saying that because a company in Florida can do something for $20,000 less is an economic benefit to Matsu and Alaskan residents, I think that just represents a completely tone-deaf perspective. I think there's no advantage in failing to advertise in the paper. That's just blatantly irresponsible, and I can't understand why this is being put forth. It just does not make any sense. I'm finished.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else online? No. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to testify? Seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing on ordinance 21-114. Deputy Mayor, would you move the legislation, please?
I move to adopt ordinance 21-114.
Is there any discussion? Yes. Assemblywoman McKee?
Yeah, the lady that was talking about this wonderful sounding, and I'm sure that it is, electronic process that you're using that's amazing. However, if that is going to result in excluding Alaskan bidders, I wanted to know if this legislation could be passed and somehow accommodate that.
To Assemblymember McKee through the mayor, this doesn't exclude anybody. It casts a wider net, is what it does. The majority of our bids are awarded, I mean, the overwhelming majority of our bids are awarded to Alaska-based companies. Where we see out-of-state companies are on supply-type contracts, not on consulting, not on contract or something like that. And the code does contain an Alaska bidder preference. So if I have two bids that come in that are very close to each other, the numbers are 5% up to $2,000. If the Alaska bidder is within that $2,000 higher than, or I'm sorry, a Matsu bidder, not even within the state, but a bidder within the Matsu, if they're just under, we award to the higher one. So we would then award to the local bidder. Code encourages the use. A lot of times in proposals, we'll put a geographic preference in it when the funding source allows. So a company that's based in the Matsu that has offices out here will score a little bit higher than somebody that's outside of the Matsu. With the state money, we have to expand it a little bit, but we can still keep it geographically within the state. So it does give Alaska bidders, or in some cases, Borough-based bidders a preference.
I suppose you could tweak that thing, because 2,000 doesn't seem like much of a, you know, not much room to move there.
To Assemblymember McKee, there's been a discussion in the past about that. I know that the attorney has some input on that. There's case law about too much favoritism, but just to give you an example, Anchorage has a $50,000 dollar limit. So there is, I mean, our preference in code is very small at this point.
Madam Mayor?
You certainly couldn't amend what's on the floor tonight to do this. This would have to be a standalone legislation. You could certainly talk about that at a later time, but that's not before you tonight.
No. Okay. Assemblywoman McKee, do you have follow-up?
Nope. If Nick is saying that that could be addressed at a later point, this is an amazing piece of legislation here. I just wanted to make sure that Alaska kind of has a, given our circumstances up here as opposed to Florida or Oregon or wherever, that we got a better shot at it. So if I can do that later, that'd be good.
Okay. Yes, Assemblymember? Go ahead.
Currently, what publications do you advertise in for bidding?
The Anchorage Daily News is the primary one, and then the Frontier. The Frontier's been lead times make it a little bit more challenging for us to get a timely ad out. Now, there are instances that will occur, such as on certain state-funded projects, we'll still have to use the newspaper. What this legislation does is it gives us the option to not use it. It removes that requirement, but when the state says you must use a newspaper for certain deed projects, schools, the federal government, again, depending on which particular agency, some of them say, use your platform, others say, no, publish in a newspaper.
Now, haven't I seen it in Journal of Commerce?
Journal of Commerce will pick up our bids. There's plans rooms down in Washington, and what they do is they go ahead and from the system that we're using, they grab that information, they put it into their system, and they turn around and charge contractors to get that information.
Yeah.
What we're doing is we're offering them a subscription service that's free. And the added benefit of working directly with us is they get the latest up-to-date information. Oftentimes, the plans room will change the name a little bit. They'll change the entity that the job belongs to. I got information today sent to me, a bidder inquiring about a job in Wasilla, you know, and why they contacted us as opposed to Wasilla, I don't know. But that still happens. Journal of Commerce is a big one. I mean, they pick our stuff up, and they go ahead and reprint it. So.
Follow-up, sir?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Assemblymember Hale, do you still have a comment, sir, online?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. And through the mayor, to Assemblymember McKee, you bring up a good point that $2,000 is not very much when it comes to some of these larger bids. And if you were to propose legislation to raise that rate, I would be more than happy to work with you on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hale. We'll get together. Thank you. Okay. I'm, on the website, on the borough website, I see a link where it says contract opportunities or something. That's also, is that also available for what you're discussing here?
To the mayor, when you go onto our contract opportunities link, that takes you to the, the general purchasing page. There's summaries in there, but when you click on that, it redirects you over to the, the third-party system that we're using.
Okay. So that's available then also for paper?
True.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other discussion on this legislation? Go ahead, sir.
I, I was personally myself, I probably haven't used the newspaper in 15 to 20 years to solicitate bids, to be honest.
Yeah.
And everything's gone electronic, and you gotta stay sharp. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Is there any objections to passing this legislation? Okay. Hearing none, then this legislation passes. Excuse me. The next item is audience participation. So the people that are online that earlier had their hand raised, if they're still interested in testifying on anything, this would be the opportunity, but we'll first go to the people here in person. So, all righty. And we do have some testimony. And testimony is limited to three people, or three minutes per person, and if you'll state your name for the record also, please.
I'll try.
Okay.
Sorry. Don't count my three minutes as starting yet.
We'll wait till, till your name comes out of your mouth, and then we'll start the three minutes, okay?
Okay.
Unless, unless you're, you know, still doing this for the next five minutes, then we'll, then we will excuse you.
And Ms. Harms, before you start talking, if you could bring the mic down so we can capture, capture your testimony. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. I'm Kathleen Harms, and before I start, I have to say, Assemblyman Two, you are my representative. You're from my district. You're representing me, and so I'm going to talk to you the most, and that'll help me get through it. And Mayor, you are also representing me in particular, so I'm also going to be talking to you, but the rest of you guys can listen. I have lived in Alaska since before the pipeline, before Congressman Don Young was congressman, and before there was an Iditarod. I've been a resident of the West Susitna area for 38 years, so putting it all together, I am an elder. A road of 100-plus miles bisecting the West Susitna drainage area has no potential benefit for the people who live here. It is completely for the benefit of a private foreign company. It is not for us. This project has not even begun to fulfill the obligation for public outreach. If public outreach is done, it will soon be seen that it is not for us. For the animals, from the little ones that we can't even see, to the big ones that we like to eat, the plant life, the fish, and the land itself, it is a massively expensive strip of death. It will destroy the mystique of the Iditarod, one of our most valuable cultural possessions, I guess you could say. Not worth it. It's not for us. Moreover, NOVA, the foreign mining company, has been seen by knowledgeable, unprejudiced professionals familiar with other mining companies in Alaska to be a very poor and inferior steward of the land, clearly inferior to a mining company standard. It has been seen to leave construction garbage littered all over. It has been seen to dump sewage into the river. It has been seen to dump oil and other fuel below the water mark of the river. It is not a good company for us to be working with, and I don't know why we are. So say no to this project.
Thank you. Okay. The next person is Carol Tyler.
My name is Carol Tyler. I live in West Big Lake. I've lived here for many, many decades. I asked the Assembly to reject the Phase III Susitna Access Road MOU because adequate public outreach has not been completed, an independent economic cost and benefit analysis has not been completed. This road would impact designated recreational rivers and have immense effects on pristine wetlands to only benefit foreign mining companies. As a Matu resident, it would negatively impact the habitat and resources I rely on. I do not support this project. Please do not approve the Phase III MOU. And I vote for you, Moki, so please no. Thank you for your time.
I was gonna say, how did you get the mic out of that?
I'm sorry.
All right. My name's Mark Miller. I've been a, working in, working out of the borough for the last 43, 44 years. I disagree with this road. Ada is willing to invest upwards of $350 million or how many cost overrun it's gonna be, but for what, you know? I mean, for such an investment, you wanna get something in return. It's not gonna bring up your tax, you know, the borough's tax revenue. You're already taxing all the buildings out there already, and, and you really have nothing to return to us. So we're paying a heck of a lot of tax for nothing, and we don't need a road out there. It's a beautiful recreational area. It's gonna ruin that. And then, you know, the mining, there, there's proposed mines on Ada says, open coal pit mine up in Upper Canyon Creek. Nobody's buying coal anymore. I mean, Healy isn't sending out their coal. Placer Mining on the Upper Squitna, nobody knows how much is there and how much they're gonna do. And I heard rumors they're gonna have a, a truck every eight minutes coming down that road. Can you believe that? I mean, are they gonna cut half a mountain apart probably, and are they, where are they gonna extract it? There's other ways of, of getting that ore out, you know? You can, you can, you could do smelter plants on site, and I've seen it done before. You can, and then you can fly out the stuff. They could build a bigger trip to get in heavy equipment and their stuff, but there's definitely, who's gonna maintain this road? And, and there's gonna be off-ranches, and the borough's gonna be saying, well, we're gonna have to do a lot of maintaining out there. Can you imagine sending a truck out there 60 miles away and grading the roads? They can't even fix the roads we got. I live in a road, I had to fix it myself, you know, because it's, you know, I've been yelling at the borough, you know, or asking them if they could please fix my road. It's a mud trail in the spring, and finally had to do it myself. You know, environmental damage, golly, there's no end to it. I mean, half of that road is over wetlands, number one, and the other half is, you know, cutting right across some of the prime rivers. I mean, the people can bring out their boats and, and hit these made tributaries, they're gonna, they're gonna kill a fishery. And, you know, some of Ada's stuff that they've done, I'm gonna go real fast. I mean, look at the Anchorage Seafood Processing Plan, $25 million. There's no fish there. I mean, nobody, you know, so who, you know, they might as well, you know, I don't know. But anyway, so they sold it to a church for a million bucks. You know, the Ferry Colts who sit in a $78 million loss. I mean, what kind of loss are we gonna get out of this, you know, in the borough? I mean, anyway, I'm against the son of a gun, I think just dry it up. See you later. Thank you.
Norman Godfrey?
My name's Norman Godfrey, G-O-D-F-R-E-Y.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak on OR 22-002, the Amendment of the Conditional Use Permits for Earth Materials Extracting, Extraction. And this is sponsored by Assemblymember Two. So I'm against this, and this will almost triple the amount of gravel that can be extracted without a conditional use permit. They're trying to put in a gravel pit next to my house on Sylvan Road right now, which is the reason I'm here. And I just learned about this yesterday. Otherwise, this place would be full of my neighbors, like it was last time we went against this gravel pit. But none, none of them knew about it until yesterday. So I'm the only one, I, I think, that has shown up to speak about it. But what will happen if this passes is they will not need permission to open that gravel pit right next to our houses, surrounded on three sides by houses. And so they'll only be able to take 20,000 yards a year as opposed to the, I, I can't remember the number that they had originally posed, but it was substantially more than that. But what will happen is the land will be dubbed a gravel pit, and then from that step to the step that they want will be an easy step, which is my, the reason for my opposition. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
They must be able to hear me, even I don't have the mic. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. My name is Brian Largent, L-A-R-G-E-N-T. I'm representing Sutton Community Council, and I want to speak about Jonesville Public Use Area Management Plan. I'm going to be pretty brief. I'm a little ashamed because I moved to Alaska three years ago, a little, three and a half years ago, not like you all, but I live about a mile from Jonesville. So one of the first places I went was Jonesville Public Use Area. Actually, it was, the day after I moved to Alaska was when the governor signed the legislation. So I wanted to see what was, what is about. I hope you read George's letter. He gives you a history, Representative Rousher's letter, he gives you a history lesson much better than I could here. He also calls it similar to a war zone. I call it, I called it, when I walked up there, a 15,000-acre dumpster fire, and it's gotten worse since then. So the Jonesville Public Use Area Management Plan is a goal, is a, is a vision to start putting out the dumpster fire. There are things in there that are difficult to consider, to think about, to look at and make decisions about, but what's nice about this plan is when the Assembly adopts it, it doesn't change anything day one. It gives us a framework to work from to go and make wise decisions about what to do up there, and also to encourage the state to help us. I've tried to encourage the state to help us. Representative Rousher has tried to encourage the state to help us. I hope that the borough has a little bit more weight and resources to encourage the state to help Jonesville improve. So I, I, and I also encourage anyone with any questions to contact me. Joe Metzger is the person working who will present the plan at your next meeting when it comes up for a vote. Please contact him if you have any questions, comments, concerns, or if you know of issues. I'm sure there, you will hear some issues, and please help us to help you make a wise decision. So thank you very much for your time.
Esther Huddleston?
I went to the planning, my name is Esther Huddleston. I went to the Planning Commission yesterday in regards to the Jonesville Management Plan, and Joe Metzger said that there was no restrictions in regards to mining in the Jonesville Management Plan. However, in the Jonesville Management Plan, it makes it clear that mining companies cannot mine in the months of May and June, and that they have to have approval, the state does, before any mining could go forth. What I have problems with about the Jonesville Management Plan is that the creators of the plan should have reached all of the companies and given them the opportunity to participate in creating this management plan. I had to personally call Yusebeli and notify them about the Jonesville Management Plan because they own the land leases, and there are other companies that own the land leases and still haven't been notified by the borough about this, and it's irresponsible for the borough to proceed with this without contacting them. Yes, we do need a management plan, but what I'm concerned about is the borough getting sued because you didn't contact these companies who own the land leases, and you can't take something away from a company and turn it into a recreational park without having a conversation with them. And also, there's wording sensitive habitat in the Jonesville Management Plan, and just about every single motorized trail goes through swampland, and they want to reroute those trails. And I'm afraid that it will create abuse of power from the land manager that they can just call this sensitive habitat because this trail goes through swampland, and now motorized recreational people can't go through that swampland. And a lot of hunters rely on recreational vehicles for hunting. Well, if they consider the swampland sensitive habitat, how are they gonna haul out their game? And I think, yes, we do need this plan, but first we need to contact those companies that own the land leases and then get rid of the months of May and June, and the state should notify the borough about their contracts, not, we give them permission because they own the land, they own the land leases, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. John Faeo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Assembly. John Faeo, last name is F-A-E-O. I'll be short and brief. 65-year resident, State of Alaska, born and raised here. Forty years in this area that we're talking about, in my concern, the West is sitting the access route. They are trying to imagine building a 60-plus-mile road to get up to this mine that they're trying to develop, and it's been shuffling hands over the years. There's no way in heck that you're gonna be able to support a road of that magnitude to get from the Beluga or Point McKinnon area up to what they call Whiskey Bravo. It's inaccessible in the wintertime. Get an example of the last snowstorm we've had. There's no to get from the Beluga or Point McKinns area up to what they call Whiskey Bravo. It's inaccessible in the wintertime. Get an example of the last snowstorm we've had. There's no way to keep a road open with the three-plus feet of snow they got in twenty-four hours up there. You'd be running nonstop with bulldozers to try to keep it open. The streams and creeks they got across, they're affecting a lot of fish wildlife, not to mention the moose, the bear habitat out in the area, the fox, the coyote, et cetera, et cetera. It would devastate the area with the impact. It'd become a Petersville, be a playground, and it would devastate the area. I've been out there for forty years, like I've indicated, and it's all about solitude out there. And there's not gonna be real, any revenue generated back to the state that I can see in reference to them digging out ore out of the hill. And the lady had a good point in the beginning, trucking, or maybe the gentleman did, Carl, trucking that stuff all the way out, that's not a good mining process. You go in the hole. When you gotta truck that stuff all the way back to process it, it just doesn't work. And it'd be a shame for the borough to get themselves in a hole trying to support a project like this. If any of yous would like to go and see it for yourself, I'd be more than glad to fly you the whole route, winter and summer, just to show you what they're trying to envision and put a road in. I don't know where they'd get the dirt to cover all the wetlands without tearing the whole side of Mount Susitna down, and Mount Beluga. It just can't happen. And then the bridges they gotta build. The fish are gonna feel it, and the, well, the habitat's gonna feel it as well. So I, I do not support the Susitna Access Project. It's a money-losing battle. It's been changing hands. And I've seen the bulldozer activity over the last few years, constantly trying to feed that place. The airplane's trying to feed it with fuel. And I've learned to live with that. But I don't know if I could live with a road right there that's supposed to be open year round. So I'm not a supporter of the access road. Thank you.
Hi there, Mayor, Assembly Members. Thank you for your time. My name is Steve H. Perrins II, P-E-R-R-I-N-S. Wrote a long, detailed testimony that I was gonna share with you tonight. You know, I wanted to try to convey all the reasons why you should not vote to approve the final phase of the Susitna Road project. But in all honesty, I feel like you will just rubber stamp this anyways and move on. Partially, I feel like that because I wrote an email about a month ago with another follow-up, emailed two weeks later. I practically got no response. Finally, a couple people responded and said that they would look into this. That's, those are the kind of reasons people get discouraged with government, and they stop trying, because they feel like they're not being heard. I feel like this project has improperly moved through its first two phases. It has not fulfilled its MOU obligations, and is gonna be voted on tonight without the vast majority of the stakeholders being aware of it. I truly hope that you research this project as much as I did before you vote on it. And regardless of what supplemental resources may or may not be enhanced, the real economic value behind this project is the mining opportunities. And unless those mines go into operation, this simply does not make financial sense for Alaska. I am not anti-mining or development, but I would want to try to find a way that industries could thrive together. The fact is that this road would destroy my business and many others along the route. From the mining companies' perspective, they need to be able to extract minerals and bring them to market. So let's take some time and look at other options, like a railroad, a winter road, barging, larger aircraft, or an onsite plant like Donlin Mine is doing. Sure, those may be more expensive than the road, but even one of these five mining companies is looking at taking in nine billion dollars. That money is not gonna stay in Alaska anyways, and it's probably not even gonna stay in America. There's gotta be a way we can encourage the mining companies to grow our economy without destroying well-established businesses and Alaskans' way of life. The truth is that people live and recreate in the Susitna Valley because it's remote, and that's the Alaska way of life. Please don't destroy that. I was born and raised here, and God willing, I'll die here. I first went to Rainy Pass Lodge when I was about six months old, and I have worked there for the last eighteen years with my wife. And my wife and I and our two young kids hope to buy it from my parents and keep it going. Maybe someday, one of my two young children will have that option, but not if this road is built. Rainy Pass Lodge was established in nineteen thirty-seven, prior to statehood, and holds cultural and historical significance. It has been a safe haven to many travelers and a worldwide destination spot for many tourists. Makes no mistake that your vote tonight is either to support the Alaskan way of life, or to support an Australian-based exploration company and put Alaska's oldest hunting lodge out of business. That is your vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So there is another Steve Perrins also? Okay. Thank you.
My name is Stephen H. Perrins I. I'm the dad. And I'm in strict opposition to the way this has moved forward, the way, the way it started here. We came to one of your first meetings. Ninety-seven percent of the public testimony was against it. Couple of your assembly members even said, hey, have we really looked into this? And yet you voted for it anyway, even after they admitted they had not looked into some of the things that were going on, and they'd been told. We've reached out numerous times, as my son said, with little to no response back unless we keep pushing. We finally got a meeting with Ada here about two weeks ago and sat down to discuss some things with them. You know, it's gotta be proven to me that they're really serious about wanting to listen and wanting to know the alternatives. I'd like to believe that that can go down the road properly, but you've gotta slow down and stop this thing right now until you get your facts straight. A year ago, I asked the folks at Ada about their, some of the resources that they proposed to develop out there, and forestry was one of them. And I asked them, I said, have you even been out there and looked at forestry? And they said, no. So you voted to put this money together, and nobody's even seen it. The only thing out there forestry-wise is dead spruce right now. So they changed their tune after they finally went out this last year and flew it and said, we got fire suppression and that sort of thing. The agricultural resources that are there, look what's happened to the farms across the inlet that are a lot closer, okay? The agricultural resources aren't there. The, the things that this Australian company have come up with and sold you a bill of goods on paper, that nobody is even willing to spend nine hundred and fifty dollars to get in a two oh six, or get in with Mr. Fayo, who'll take you out there and show you. We've invited these participants to our lodge to sit down and talk. They've given lip service to it and would, they housed with us for a short period the first year, and that was a fiasco and did not turn out well. They did not stand up to what their promises were. Your communication has been terrible, and Ada told us two weeks ago, well, that was the Matt News, you know, the, Matt Borough's responsibility to reach out. And the answers we had before that, well, it's hard to reach everybody out there. Doesn't everybody get a tax bill in the mail that lives out there? I certainly do. So it can be done. It just seems like you don't wanna do it. You don't wanna do the due diligence. And that's very disheartening for those of us that live our life out there. You've got about five people here testifying in person on this today. Bucky Winkley's been a guide out there since nineteen sixty-four. He can't get in. He has very little access to email. We're able to tell him what's going on. You got people who live throughout that area that don't get a notice whatsoever. And when they do get a notice, it's short notice. It's short-lived. And so that's why you don't have the participants here that are in opposition to it. Your contact, if this process, and I believe it is, is gonna move forward, then the Matsu Borough has a responsibility to all of the taxpayers to communicate with them. And you can do that. If you can get voted, and if you can get a job with Ada, you're smart enough how to get ahold of the people out there and let them know really what's going on. If you want it to be done fairly, then let's get all the cards on the table. I just think that this, it's been poor, this, this partner yours is a bad partner. Nova's got a terrible reputation in the state. I've not talked to anybody out there that can tell me good things about them. We worked with mining companies at our lodge through entire hunting seasons, somebody in this room here that was the manager of that operation, and had three helicopters to five helicopters working throughout our season, communicating with us, and we worked as good neighbors together and got through it. Now it's moved over to Whiskey Bravo, which they were in our backyard. They were in our airstrip when this happened. We worked great with them. This partner has run Mr. Winkley out of business, cut roads right past his cabin where he's been operating for decades, and had clients finally say, I didn't come to Alaska to put up with this and going home. Destroyed his finances. So I encourage you to vote no on this. I encourage you to at least slow it down and, and do the due diligence that you're responsible to your taxpayers and get the players on, on the table. We're willing to sit down and talk with these folks. We're not anti-mining. We're not anti-development. It just needs to be done properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to, yes, a couple people there? Okay. That's fine. Come on up closer, sir, so when your turn comes. Thank you.
I would like to speak about the motion for reconsideration you have before you tonight. What that is, the, the, it determines whether the Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission will submit a report every quarter to the assembly, or whether they will not. In the last six years, I can verify that, in fact, the Fish and Wildlife Commission has never submitted a report on wildlife to the Borough Assembly. In fact, they have only submitted reports on salmon with one exception. And one time, they mentioned Pike eating salmon, okay? That's all. So that, what you have is you have a, a group that has a substantial budget. In fact, five years ago, they spent sixty thousand dollars in a five-day period at the Sheraton Hotel, meeting with the whole group, okay? I protested that so much, they changed that, okay? The hotel rooms that, if people on the assembly and the commission actually were thirty-eight miles from their home, rented hotel rooms for two hundred dollars a night. For two hundred dollars a night, I would expect hot and cold blending maids along with it, okay? That's a thousand dollars per person that was spent. I think that money could be spent better elsewhere. Now, it sounds like I'm against the commission. I am not. If indeed, the borough is going to be an in-state tourist destination, they have to upgrade their parks and recreation. They have to upgrade their fishing opportunities. They have to publicize all that. More than that, you just have had people testifying about a major activity that is going to, would, in fact, adversely, or, or it would certainly have an impact, the West Susitna Access. If you have a wildlife commission, shouldn't they submit a report to you as the assembly? In fact, the assembly here, sometimes, I don't think you folks understand what your responsibilities are. You are comparable to a board of directors in the corporation, okay? A commission reports to you. In fact, what you have, interestingly enough, is, and the Borough Attorney can verify this or tell me I'm wrong, I believe that the ordinance that allows the Fishing Game Commission to exist states they cannot lobby. Eighty-five percent of their time is spent lobbying, okay? So my, what I would urge the assembly to do is go back, take all the ordinances, look at them again, and reconstitute the commission. Thank you.
George, would you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. George McKee, M-C-K-E-E, spelled like the person up there second to the end.
Oh, how about that, huh? You're our next, sir.
All right. Andrew Traxler, own Papoose Milling. So we're gonna put this right in front here. We're gonna do a little show and tell.
Okay.
So you see what that is? That is a beetle-kill spruce tree. And so recently, I believe, at two meetings ago for the Borough Meeting, you guys approved our timber sale for eighty acres up in Talkeetna. And prior to that, you guys also removed the driving safety plan. So with you removing the driving safety plan, I can report that a hundred and fifty semi-loads of logs have been traveling around the valley since then. Eighty of them went to Anchorage. So we sold wood to Anchorage. And so they bought it, and they're getting their firewood. So this tree here came off the ground up there in Talkeetna. So it broke off spruce tree, it was laying on the ground. Lager brought it out, I ran it through the mill, and now the rest of it is in somebody's home. So that's what we can do with our beetle-kill spruce trees. And I'm here to speak for the Ada Project, the Susitna Access Project. We need five hundred acres a year minimum to supply my sawmill business and to supply the ten thousand cords that's needed in the valley every year for our firewood. Our trees are going backwards. They're diseased. They're dying. They're falling on the ground. We only need a ten-inch tree to do this. Made thirty thousand linear feet of this this year. Could've sold ninety thousand linear feet if I had it. We mill about a third of the cabins that we're asked to mill every year. Very cost-effective. I guess a good point would be, a lot of people spent around two dollars and eighty cents a linear board foot for their homes this summer. All the homes that were purchased through my business, Papoose Milling, they paid the same dollar twenty-five a board foot that they were quoted. We're booked for 2022 for all of the spruce trees I think I'll be able to buy. Bought seventy-five thousand dollars worth of trees this year so far of the beetle-kill spruce that you see falling down, you know? Literally have bought trees that were laying on the ground, you know, actually paid for them. Meeting with Kinnick Tribal this week to look at a five hundred acre timber sale. Have spoke to the Borough Manager about buying a five hundred acre timber sale to produce this kind of material. I'm going to the Kenai Peninsula Borough to meet with their forester on December fourteenth, fifteenth, gonna look at six hundred and fifty acres. It's all road access to where I'm gonna do this, you know? And we've spoke to the Borough Manager, that you guys have around ten thousand acres in the Susitna Access corridor. We need five hundred acres a year. So I've ran my sawmill business in Beldies, Seward, Kenai, Talkeetna this summer. I'd rather be in the borough, you know? Where am I gonna run my mill? It's up to you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Yes, go for it, sir.
Mark Miller, back again. I-
Oh, I'm sorry. You've already spoken, sir.
But I'm gonna speak about another issue.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I guess, sorry about that. Yeah. Anyone else, anyone else in the audience that hasn't spoken? Yes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gabe Kitter, K-I-T-T-E-R. I would like to comment on the Susitna West Access Project. I'm here today as a thirty-two-year Borough resident in my life and avid user of, of the area being discussed this evening. As a construction worker myself, I completely understand the benefits of projects such as these to the local workforce when local residents are actually utilized to do the projects, and the projects benefit the residents in the area with little to no risk. I also understand the benefits of exploration, mining, and exporting of minerals for profit, and can typically stand behind them when done properly. But this proposal is different. It is poorly analyzed and reckless. To me, I feel this project has been going on behind the scenes and has not been broadcasted to the public very well at all. The benefits of this project are minuscule in comparison to the massive risk. Currently, the materials being transported to and from the mine are being done via snowcat on a winter road that has little to no effect on the land or resources in the area. I can get behind the idea of using a winter road and agree with further use of it. On the other hand, this plan for a road is totally different animal. This road would create permanent mark on our untouched and wild areas that we enjoy as the backyards to our cabins and homes. The risk versus reward is unacceptable. The idea of mining resources for the short-term financial gain and in doing so- resources for the short-term financial gain and in doing so damaging, affecting, or eliminating resources that cannot be replaced, that a lot of us locals in the area rely on, is nothing short of greedy and careless. The state of Alaska and its residents have been affected by projects like this repeatedly, and it's incomprehensible how we are open to the idea of allowing it to happen time and time again. An out-of-state company coming to our state, using our land to access our minerals, and giving us a small sliver of profits back for them, and all of this being done using mainly non-resident workforces does not make any sense. This would allow easy access to the area that all of us cherish and have worked so hard to have access to ourselves. This state is known for having its vast areas of untouched and wild places. This is just another example of chipping away at the core reason for all of us living here in the first place. There are multiple mines that are currently active and still producing minerals in Alaska right now. I don't see the benefit of another. Further down the road, when resources from mining become few and far between and other mines dry up, I could see bringing a plan like this to the table. Who exactly is this mine benefiting? Are the minerals being sold inside the United States for profit, or are they just going out of country to someone else? I would like to see the intent for financial gain put aside for once and think about what's best for the land, natural resources, and the people that own and utilize them all. Simply put, my answer to this is no. And I hope the people here that I have been, that I have voted for to represent me can do just that and say no as well. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Anyone else that's here in person that hasn't testified yet? Okay. How many people do we have online, sir? Okay, let's go. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Becky Long, L-O-N-G, and I want to speak on Resolution 21134, Phase 3 West Sussitna Access. This is a very significant controversial proposal, and it needs a full public hearing. Previously, the Matsu Borough approved, Assembly approved Phase 2 MOU, and those contractual obligations have been violated. Under Section 7 of that MOU, these violations mean that that MOU should have been terminated. The Assembly has an obligation to correct these violations. The Phase 2 MOU violations have to do with local and regional stakeholders and the general public. We're supposed to be kept informed of what was going on at all times. There was two project websites that went offline. That's a bummer. That could have been used to keep us informed. Stakeholders were not notified on the Phase 2 progress, including the project being in the Governor's Bond Bill. They weren't notified of the $8.5 million in the HB 69 budget bill. There was no notification to the stakeholders and the public. Phase 3 should not happen until the Phase 2 violations are corrected. The Assembly previously passed the Phase 2 for MOU based on the fact that this is to be a public road. However, Ada's cost estimates are only for a private road. Thus, their cost estimates are a lie, a smokescreen. We need an independent company to do the economic impact report. Ada's in-house economic report touts jobs, 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 and millions to the Borough tax base. Really? How can this be when there is no extraction tax on the coal companies? That's an example. The economic impact study does not even mention the current jobs and the vibrant economies that will be lost or negatively impacted by this road. They are happening now, and they've been there since way before statehood. And this isn't even on their radar in their list. We need a cost-benefit analysis, the true estimates of the cost-benefit analysis by an independent people, not people that work for Ada. Is the Borough willing to spend millions of dollars to rehabilitate the waterways, the wetlands, the fish and wildlife habitat that will be degraded by this building of this road and the use of its road? For this surely will happen. Please think long and hard on this, and don't rubber stamp this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Yes, go ahead.
Hi. My name is Laura Wright, W-R-I-G-H-T. I am a resident of District 7 and the Upper Sussitna Valley, and I want to encourage the Assembly to reject the Phase 3 Sussitna Access Road. The criteria for Phase 1 and 2 have not been met, and there's just not enough information on costs, wetlands, water crossings, and more. I feel like Ada is doing a build-it-and-they-will-come approach, but that is at the expense of fish and wildlife habitat, remote homesteaders, lodge owners, quality of life, and recreationalists such as myself, who I have skied the entire Iditarod Trail, so I am familiar with that country out there, and I do want to continue to enjoy and explore its beauty. What is being proposed here would have a huge impact, and I get the feeling that the whole thing is being kept very quiet. The bare minimum is being done in terms of the public process. So I do urge the Assembly to not approve this phase of the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another person? Okay. Go ahead next, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Hoyer. I'm the Director of the Sussitna River Coalition. Our small organization has been involved in this project since we learned of Phase 2 at an Assembly meeting last year. Since that point, our level of concern about this project has risen, and our level of distrust and dissatisfaction for Ada has skyrocketed. Ada has promised over and over again to their Board, to the Borough, and to the Legislature that they will inform stakeholders, that they were involved with public, that this road benefits the Matsu Borough, but they have done almost zero public engagement. And the only benefits we've been able to see, which is from the only report that this project, and comes from Ada's in-house staff, shows no downside to the project, skewed job numbers, and only truly seems to benefit Ada and the actual foreign mine developers themselves. Because Ada has so blatantly failed to follow through on their promise and written commitment in Phase 2 MOU, we have worked to educate the region that this project exists. Though we are still talking to people in the region who have no idea this project is on the docket. Tonight, we've heard from a number of local landowners and business owners in the area who have not been contacted, let alone notified about this or other Ada meetings having to do with this development. At Ada's most recent Board Meeting, when they were discussing this topic, even Ada's own Board expressed skepticism of this project. And as someone who sits in on most Ada Board Meetings, I can tell you that is a very rare occurrence. It is not the Borough's job to push this project and to do outreach and to be a pawn for Ada. If they want this project, they have the funds, the resources, and the staff to make this happen. Ada has been promising things they want to live on, and I'm sure will continue to promise whatever they think you want to hear this evening. I encourage you to ask hard questions, see the actual numbers for what this will cost the Borough, dive deeper into their promise of a public road, which they've recently stated that those sections will need to be paid for by the state and Borough, and is not an actual part of the current project cost. I encourage you to step away from this project, decline Phase 3 MOU, leave this area accessible for those of us that live, hunt, fish, recreate, and have businesses in this area, and celebrate the work that the Borough has done in recent years to bring harvestable salmon runs back to our rivers. And don't pay to give our way an enviable terrain for snow machine and hunting and angling. This is the reason we live here, not to build a private road that will forever change the area and our way of life. By signing this MOU, you are ignoring your constituents. You're saying that you would rather support mining executives in Australia than ensure some of Alaska's oldest hunting and fishing lodges survive and thrive. If you haven't been to this part of the Borough in a while, I encourage you to get out and see it, which is more than most Ada people have done, so that you can see what the boondoggle of a project this would turn into. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Do we have another person? Okay, thank you. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yeah, Tran Smith again, speaking on the Sussitna Road Access Project. I want to say $184 million spent on the Point McKinney Rail Extension, a project that was overwhelmingly opposed by the community, not finished, $120 million short of completion. Huge waste of money that we residents are not even allowed to use. Now, I don't know who's pulling the wool over whose eyes here. It's hard to assume good faith. Mr. Traxler, my neighbor, I'm sorry, but we don't really necessarily need more road to cut down trees in Alaska. There's a lot of road in Alaska, a lot of road. And, you know, I understand the perspective of the, you know, there's a lot of good money in mining in Alaska, and I've got a lot of friends and relations in the business. And, you know, that's perfectly fine. I don't know that Nova Minerals, this Australian company that has like the worst track record of any company that has even tried to do business in Alaska, but a lot of other places as well. I mean, like, just do a little bit of homework, folks. For 60 miles, that's double the length of the rail extension, 60 miles through swamp? Are you guys kidding? Like, how much of our tax money are you going to waste before you realize that you're accountable to the people who live in the Matsu Borough? I mean, please reconsider. Good faith assumed, but please reconsider this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another party? Okay. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor and Assembly, it's an honor to speak to you this evening. My name is Kirsten Dixon, D-I-X-O-N. I live and work in District 7 at 6159 latitude and 15204 longitude along the Iditarod Trail at the Finger Lake checkpoint, and along with my family, own and operate a Wilderness Adventure Lodge there called Winter Lake. We've done this work for over 40 years. We've raised and educated our two children there. If you think about those coordinates, you might begin to understand my alarm with the prospect of a private industrial road development being considered literally right in my front yard. I've heard virtually nothing about the West Sussitna Access Road project until recently. My family and I base our business on the promise that guests from around the world can come to experience the wonderment of the untouched natural world. Experiencing our wild nature is the reason people come to Alaska. Tourism is a major renewable industry within our state. In a normal year, some 2.25 million visitors come to Alaska and spend $2.2 billion during their stay. Those visitors provide 10% of all Alaska jobs. That's one job out of 10. Tourism brings $126 million into state revenue and $88 million into municipal revenues, with a total economic impact of $4.5 billion. West Sussitna Valley tourism will be critically and negatively impacted by this project. My business will be damaged beyond repair in our way of life that so many Alaskians have come to love. Roadless and non-human impacted lifestyle will be effectively ended, the end of an entire era. For what? Imagine flying out to my Wilderness Lodge, looking out over the lake at nesting moons and swans, gazing at the Alaska range ahead, and then hearing and seeing those trucks roaring nearby. Ada has teamed with Nova Minerals, an exploration company based in Australia, as we've heard tonight, to come into traditional Dennehyna lands to create an industrial road to service five hard rock extractive mining sites. Those engaged in these mine developments have named landmarks surrounding our home, my home, with such names as Whistler, Estelle, and Rain Tree West. This provides a little bit of insight into the lack of cultural sensitivity to the project and to Nova Minerals' relationship to our land. I've read the economics impact report produced by Ada, and I believe this document deserves further scrutiny. The project has potentially fraught with litigation and battles long into the future, and I just don't think any of us needs that hassle right now. I hope our leaders can be visionaries who can see the incredible and irreplaceable land value the West Sussitna Valley offers to the Matsu and to Alaska and to the world, and the value of keeping this place wild and natural as we promised. My nine-year-old grandson Ronan really asked you to check out the movie Fern Gully. He says that there's some lessons to be learned in that particular movie. Thank you. I hope you will oppose the MOU.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? We do? Okay. Go ahead. Whoever's next online.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi. This is Whitney Wolf, W-O-L-F-F. I'm a 32-year permanent resident and business owner up here in District 7. I'll be brief and probably repeat what many others have said before. I'm really concerned about this West Sussitna Access Road. I urge the Borough to not approve the Phase 3 of the Sussitna Access Road MOU. Mostly, like you've heard a lot tonight, I'm really concerned about this lack of public outreach. I feel like most Matsu residents have been really disenfranchised and aren't participating at all in the process. It's a huge expenditure of public funds and a huge use of public land from Matsu. It seemed like way over a year ago, we were at an Assembly meeting when you guys were doing the Phase 2, and there was a lot of discussion about the outreach. It just doesn't seem to have happened. So I really encourage you to rethink that part of it. I think that's been the main point of so many people's testimony, aside from the incredible impacts that this project could have. But I think you need to really rethink the public process. I think you need to get a real testimony here going and a hearing. And, you know, a lot of people are skeptical of working with Ada. There's a bad track record. But if the Borough's gonna put their name on this, you guys want to have the most robust public outreach process you can. That tends to create a more successful project. So I encourage you to reject this Phase 3 and put your heads together and come up with something that has some really good outreach that you could feel a lot better about. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have another party? Okay. Another party online. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Margaret Stern. That's S-T-E-R-N, and I'm speaking to my representative from District 7. I have a number of different concerns regarding this project, the West Sussitna Access Road, and urge the Borough Assembly to vote no on that. And I'm gonna highlight a few here in my testimony. Three parties involved in this project have done a very poor job of public outreach, like most of the other folks testifying today have mentioned. For the many members of the community that I've spoken to, an extremely small percentage are aware of the potential that this project even exists or that it's being fast-tracked. A large project like this that would inextricably alter the character of the West Sussitna watershed that we love should have the support of the public and at the very minimum have public awareness to move forward to the next phase. The Phase 1 and 2 MOUs both indicated that outreach was a goal. If that was the case, and those MOUs have not been completed as advertised, and the project should not move forward without fulfilling the promises of those past agreements. Additionally, a compelling case as to how this project actually benefits Alaskans has yet to be made. Arguments like timber access are really, like others have mentioned, not necessarily that compelling. For example, in a past Ada meeting, it was mentioned that only five jobs would be created from timber access. That doesn't really seem like a compelling reason to build a multimillion-dollar road through sensitive and economically valuable fish and wildlife habitat of the western Sussitna drainage. Also, the narrative surrounding public versus private access has been purposely confusing and misleading. The cost estimates of $350 million are for a private gravel industrial road, but what are the costs for a public road? An independent cost-benefit analysis was promised in Phase 1 and should be performed, and the actual cost to the Borough analyzed prior to moving forward. Thank you so much for your time tonight, and I hope that you vote no on the Phase 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have... we do? Okay. Go ahead. The next person online. Is there someone online?
Online.
No? Go ahead.
Hello?
If you're listening on Facebook, you're going to have to turn it off. Oh, and if you...
Okay, move on. Move on to the next one. Move on to the next one. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, it's getting late. Thanks for listening, everybody. My name is Carl Dixon, D.I.X.O.N. And my family has owned and operated businesses in remote areas of the Matsu, like a lot of people, for over forty years in District Seven, and like others, paying taxes, employing Alaskans year-round and seasonally. Presently, uh, we're on Finger Lake, the Iditarod checkpoint, Finger Lake. I know there's lots of them in the Borough. And we're on the north side of the Squentna, uh, river and operating Winter Lake Lodge. I'm, uh, speaking to ask the Assembly to reject the support of the Phase Three Squentna Access MOU, and I've got lots of concerns about this project, not the least of which is the thought of the industrial road being visible from our front deck. We've had two, three years of ice road traffic experience, uh, to make this obvious to us, and it was quite a shock. Such a project, you know, going over wetlands, crossing rivers and, and hard-fought recreation rivers, diverting water, digging gravel, will all, you know, have a huge and significant and negative impact to the already stressed and fragile fish and wildlife populations, uh, through this habitat. It's also unclear how this project would be maintained. And if it's by the operator, uh, we've already seen the careless footprint at the whiskey Bravo airstrip and the camp, and the lack of stewardship and, and permit violations of the ice road traffic we've witnessed. If, if this road ever does get open to the public, I'm not sure how the, quote, "general prosperity and economic development," unquote, promise would be achieved. Uh, they mention, uh, increased access to mining, not necessarily a good thing. Sounds like work drilling, blasting roads. Uh, alternative energy, sounds like, sounds like dams. Uh, recreation? Well, high-quality activities will be diminished for sure, and the resources will certainly be diminished, and our, our business would be forced to close. And forestry, you, you, uh, need to look at the quality of the trees. Uh, that's been argued a lot in the past. And you also mentioned seven hundred thousand acres available. That sounds like a clear cut. Well, we hope the Assembly looks at those unrealistic promises and who really benefits and who loses. Uh, not only, you know, I have concern for those of us who live and work here, uh, but the long-term real stewards of the land, the guides, the pilots, the recreational people, the lodges in Squentna, up and down the Tal, uh, us at Winter Lake, uh, folks at Canyon Lake, and, and of course, the Perrin family at Rainy Pass Lodge, and really countless Alaskans who in good faith entered into a contract with the state of Alaska to try to own a piece of remote property and only to find a road proposal through this corridor. So, I just think it's the wrong company, wrong place, and the wrong time, so I hope you'll consider this. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Is there anyone else online, sir? Okay.
Um, there is, uh-
Yes, go ahead.
Hello? Yes, my name is, yes, my name is Phil Somerville, that's S.O.M.E.R.V.E.L.L. And I, I have, I have many concerns about this project. I'm, I'm really calling to, to, uh, voice my opposition to the West Susitna Access Road in the strongest possible terms. Speaking of the lack, lack of outreach, I only heard of this by pure chance very recently, and it was not from the state or the Borough or Ada. Um, and I'm sure that's true of a great many people. And so as a result, I don't know, I have not had a chance to look in detail at the economics of this thing, but, um, speaking for myself, I've been coming to Alaska for a long time. I've lived here permanently since two thousand and six. And it wasn't because I wanted to visit industrial corridors or, um, heavy truck traffic. It was because of the natural resources of the state, the incredible beauty of the wilderness areas that we have. And it pains me deeply to see that sacrificed, uh, what seems like very lightly and in a rather knee-jerk fashion for the notional benefits of an industrial corridor, which seemed to me to be, it's almost an oxymoron. This is not a benefit. This is really destruction i- in, in, in favor of short-term profits by some company or other, really. And I guess that's really all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have another party? Four more? Okay. Go ahead. Next, please.
Hello. My name is Jessica Winstaffer, last name W.I.N.N.E.S.T.A.F.F.E.R. I am a lifetime resident of District One, and I ask the Assembly to reject the Phase Three Susitna Access Road MOU for multiple reasons. Um, the first of which that there's been completely inadequate public outreach about this project and about the Borough's proposal to use public Borough funds to, um, support this effort that would not benefit Borough residents. This project will completely alter the region, um, landowners, all Alaskans, tribal citizens, fish and wildlife that we all depend on, and it prioritizes outside interests over Alaskans. Most people in the Borough have not even heard of this project. It's been more than a year since the Borough signed the Phase Two MOU, and Ada promised that they would do more public outreach, and none has been done. Ada didn't follow through. So at this point, more time and money should not be dedicated from the Borough for a project with Ada when they can't follow through, when they refuse to communicate to the public the true purpose, the true costs, and the true impacts. I'm particularly concerned that there has been no cultural heritage or environmental impact review or assessment of this project, and that the economic assessment has been inadequate and wholly biased toward the project being positive. That's not an assessment. An assessment looks at both sides. These assessments should all be completed by a third-party unbiased vision before any further investment of the Borough is made in this project. This road would also irre- irreversibly impact recreational, designated recreational rivers, including some very important salmon fishing destinations and sources of commercial and personal-use fishing in Cook Inlet. Again, please do not support Phase Three MOU and having the Borough commit money and time and resources to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person online, please.
Yes, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Dennis Rancy, R.A.N.S.Y. I am a forty-year remote homesteader in District Seven. I'd like you to reject, uh, this MOU resolution. Remoteness is the essence of Alaska. And the west side road will rip its guts out. And I got a word to say about Ada. It's nothing but a private club for wealthy contractors. Their so-called executive sessions are notorious, and their unanimous votes are a joke, but no one has control over them. I urge you to reject this resolution, and, uh, I endorse everything all the previous, uh, commenters have said. Good night.
Good night. Next online, please.
Uh, hello. My name is Sandra Loomis. I have lived in the valley since, or in Alaska since nineteen sixty-eight and in the valley since seventy-seven. My family's hunted and fished the area. I've worked in tourism that supported me as a single mother raising two children in the valley. And I would like to say that I think that ADA has been a dismal job of any kind of meaningful public participation and notification in this project, and that this road that is going to be, we don't even know, public or private yet, I want to know who is going to pay for the maintenance. We just heard tonight in a Borough meeting of a five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar maintenance for bridges and a ten million dollar road maintenance contract. Who's gonna pay for the maintenance for, that's gonna happen if that road goes in? I can tell you who. It will be the people of the Matsu Borough. I would like to know who's gonna pay for the security of this road to make sure there's not dumped vehicles and Jim Creek kind of situations. Is it gonna be the Australian gold mine? I don't think so. It'll be the people of the Matsu Borough. I would like to know who's gonna feel the loss of the salmon and the priceless wilderness resource, the shortsightedness of a project like this and the resource that we have with this wilderness and tourism for the state of Alaska, the shortsightedness to just wipe all that away and allow, uh, clear setting, take a hundred years to go back for sending up the pittance, if you look at the profits the Borough makes off of, uh, lumber industry here, it's a pittance. It's, it's nothing. Who's gonna feel that loss? Will it be the Australian gold mining executives? Nope, I don't think so. It'll be the people of the Matsu Borough. I have to ask myself who's benefiting from this project? Who is benefiting? Big business? Big foreign business? Are the people of the Matsu Borough benefiting from this project? I don't think so. I beg of you to not approve this MOU for the West Susitna Road and big business mine project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next online, please.
Uh, hi. My name is Steve Olson. Um, I'm a retired mineral exploration geologist living in Talkeetna. Um, I would recommend to reject this project at the present time. Um, currently, Nova Gold has not submitted a feasibility study. Their resources are, they claim to have six million ounces, but that is largely in the inferred category, which is kind of like your lowest category of mining resources of, in, um, and they have said they have a decision to mine in twenty twenty-four. So I would say ADA's involvement is very premature on this. Um, so, uh, I would say, you know, let's wait and see. Um, I'm that's, so I would say reject this MOU at the current time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next person online? Nope, that's it? All right. Last call for anybody here that hasn't testified that would like to testify. Under audience participation, this is really open, it's audience participation, so it's open to any subject, okay? But we sort of bit, oh, do we find, and we got somebody now online? All right. We'll, we'll go back to online. We have someone online.
Hello. This is Brian Emerson again, E.M.E.R.S.O.N. My wife, Laura, and I are full-time residents of Trail Lake, near the base of Mount Little Susitna in Fish and Game Zone sixteen B. We have owned our property since two thousand and seven. We vote, we pay property taxes. We encourage the Assembly to reject the Phase Three Susitna Access Road MOU for both personal reasons and others based on many deleterious impacts of mines and roads in other remote parts of Alaska. Personally, the West Susitna Access Road is expected to pass close to our quiet, remote property. We're concerned about how it might negatively affect our quality of life and that of the wildlife that lives in and migrates through this region. We are naturally also concerned about a corresponding decrease in property values and the quietude, attractive views in wild animal sightings for which we bought this property and spent over a decade developing it into a home where we forage, hunt, fish, and raise many of our foods and resources. Based on the results of mining developments and roads in remote parts of Alaska, we're logically alarmed about the possibility of increases in noise, erosion, pollution, invasive species, and road access for illegal human activities that have occurred elsewhere. For example, we hope that if this project starts or finishes, it will not repeat the polluting tailings of a mine on Jonesville Road, the murder victim dumping on Jim Creek, and the many, many neglected cleanups after a company moved on to the next new parcel. The lack of public outreach surrounding this project has been one of the supposed goals of Phase One and Two, which has not been adequately addressed. Again, we encourage the Assembly to reject the Phase Three Susitna Access Road MOU. Thank you for your time this evening.
Mm, thank you. I know, I think there was lots of people want to recess, but should we go ahead and finish with the online? We got three more peoples. Everybody okay? Okay. Next person online, please. Go ahead. Someone online?
Hi there. I think you finally unmuted me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Ruth Wood, and I will tell you, your phones still aren't quite fixed because this is my landline. I called in. It put me on the meeting but didn't recognize that I raised my hand. I hung up, called in on my cellphone. It recognized that I raised my hand, but you never called on me. So I called in again, and this time I got through. But that's a lot of work to get through. But I want to talk on three things tonight. First, uh, West Susitna Access, uh, I'm very concerned about this. It's a really expensive road. It's going to be a private road to benefit a private mining company. Not only that, even though your MOU tonight doesn't ask you to put any money into it, I guarantee you, the state and ADA will ask you to put money into it. And I do not want any of my tax money going into the West Susitna Access Road. It is not for the benefit of the Borough. It's for the benefit of a private foreign country. So, I'm against that. I don't even think you should support this MOU, and I wasn't aware of all the, uh, the problems that the first MO, second MOU wasn't even done correctly. But I also want to talk, I looked at the agenda, and I saw the two referrals that you're making to the Planning Commission. And I want to say that twenty thousand cubic yards of earth extraction materials is huge, and the idea that you would even consider making that not be subject to a conditional use permit is ridiculous. Um, up here, I live in Talkeetna, uh, we are having an ongoing problem right now with the state working on extracting earth materials. Uh, it's a really, really, really bad idea to not make them have to go through a conditional use process or other people throughout the Borough. Conditional use processes are just not that difficult nor expensive. So, and the third thing I want to talk about is I see that you are sending to the Planning Commission, uh, a plan to repeal, uh, the shooting range ordinance. Okay, that shooting range ordinance may need some work, but it's about safety. And up here in rural areas, I live on a rural, in a rural area on a gravel road, and I have had people fire guns into my dog lot. So it is problematic. What, that wasn't from a shooting range, but having proper shooting ranges where people learn how to use guns safely and correctly is really important, and having those gun ranges themselves be safe is really, really important. So, I'm hoping that the Planning Commission will take a hard look, and I'm hoping that you will reconsider repeal and give it a hard look and see if there's anything you need to change, not just repeal it. Again, mi- mineral extraction, earth extraction, the rural areas, people in rural areas, some of us live off-road, some of us live on the road, and the idea of having that huge of an operation next door to someone wa- is just absolutely ludicrous. And it's really, the Borough, the Borough Assembly has to watch out for its citizens because who else will? Um, anyway, I'm really, and I really hope you will not approve that MOU, and I can- Anyway, I'm really, and I really hope you will not approve that M O U, and I can give you instances of the state wanting to build something for us here. Oh, did it ring? I didn't hear it.
Yeah, it did. Yeah.
Okay, sorry. You got my points.
Okay. All righty, thank you. All righty, next person online?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Casey Long. I'm a property owner out at the Confluence of the Happy and the Squintin River. Opposed to the West to Sitna Access Road for a private mining company. Being a background in exploration geology as well and working in the exploration field in Nevada, I know what these large mines do to the environment. Strictly opposed to this, especially with the salmon run we have in the area and the wildlife, no good. You're talking about this road being private. Well, I'm an air taxi owner as well. I fly the Matsu Valley every day during the season, and I see the devastation that these, the access does to the environment, particularly the, this railroad line that you guys put in or the state put in, you all put in. They said they put gates up. Well, everybody cuts the gates down. There's numerous cars and four-wheelers. You fly on the east side of the big Susitna River, and you see what these people are doing to the environment. That's what's going to happen out Alexander Creek, Alexander Lake, Seven Mile Lake, the Talkeetna River, across over to the Shell Hills, Shell Lake, it's just going to devastate this whole area. Carl Dixon's Lodge right there, they're going to destroy all that area, as well as my property, all the way up into the Rainy Pass. They'll get there. You put a road, and these people will get there. There'll be garbage everywhere, so I'm strictly opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last person online? All righty. We're going to, let's see, it's eight twenty-seven, so let's come back at like 20 minutes to nine. Should we go ahead and close it before we have more people? All right. We'll go ahead and close audience participation. We'll take a break till eight forty, and then we'll come back, and I believe we will hear from A I D A.
Resolution 21134, resolution in support of the Alaska Industrial Development and Export Authority effort to diverse phase, excuse me, advance Phase Three of the West to Sitna Access Project feasibility study towards an application to the Governing Regulatory Agency.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt Resolution 21-134 as read into the record by the clerk.
Okay. So we're going to have staff report, I guess by you, right, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to invite Alan Weisner, the Executive Director for A I D A. He's going to come forward. They have a presentation would also mention that Dave Heimke, their COO, and Jesse Peterson, the Senior Project Manager from A I D A, and then Brad Swartz from the Matsu Borough will be in support as well. So they'll provide you an update, and we'll have a discussion around where we've been and where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. And Madam Mayor, I wanted to also extend our congratulations to you on the recent election and for other Assembly members. It's very good to be in front of you, and I really appreciate the time. I know we're limited on time. We've had a lot of time here. Today's getting late, so we want to make sure we go through it fairly quickly. But we do want to leave room to address any questions that people have. First of all, from my side, I really want to appreciate the forum that you set up. They were able to get public comment first. People were able to identify their particular issues on the project, that we also were here to hear that, to understand that. And hopefully, we're able to address a few of those particular points in the presentation, but we remain available. And I really want to identify myself, Alan Weisner, Executive Director for A I D A. I have also Dave Heimke, our Chief Operating Officer for A I D A. We have Jesse Peterson, the Project Manager for A I D A. Please know all of us, if you have ongoing questions about, anything about the project, about A I D A itself, I know that there's some assumptions that have been identified about A I D A that personally I would like to have an opportunity to correct that were incorrect, but that's for a later time. And really, any questions, you're always able to address us directly. So again, I really appreciate the forum that you've been able to set up for us. What we have, very quickly, is some very brief information on A I Ada, which I just want to identify for everyone. We are the state's economic development finance authority. We were established in 1967. We were initially created to really issue condo revenue bonds, and we've grown since then into a very broad spectrum of projects. But a lot of it is highly related and very tied into what is critical for Alaska's development. We were brought into statehood as a resource state. A lot of the projects that Ada is involved in, outside of our loan programs for commercial real estate sector or small business development programs, but it is focused on larger project development within the state to initiate economic development. And that really is focused on resource projects, and that's what we have also been involved in directly. One particular project I would want to highlight, it has a lot of relationship to what we're talking about, is the Red Dog project. We created the road infrastructure, port, infrastructure, storage for a nascent mine development up in the northwest Arctic Borough, a little bit north of Kasebu, which in its initiation had a, you know, the same views and same ideas that are being highlighted about a limited resource not having a lot of opportunity for Alaskans. That particular project is the Red Dog project that Nana and Tech were able to create. Now it's three generations' worth of 600 jobs annually at that mine. It's the number two zinc supplier globally, and Alaska has been able to show that where we can develop our mineral resources and our other resources in coexistence with conservation. And I really want to highlight that particular point, but that, because that's a key foundation element of the state itself. We've been able to implement that broadly across our mineral sector, our oil and gas sector, our timber sector, our other resource sectors, and it's a role that I'm very proud that Ada's been involved in. We grew our balance sheet from a level of initially about $300 million to $1.6 billion. And that's including delivering back to the state for all of our services, our social services within the state, to UGF, of over $450 million. I think, in concert with, and if you've got to understand us, you would be proud of the organization that Alaskans have created in Ada. And we hope to really go forward in showing that pride in our own institutions that invest solely in Alaska, again, coexisting with our business owners. Ultimately, whenever we invest in a business, we're looking at the financial feasibility of it and the returns that are coming from that. They only go to two sources. It goes right back into projects within the state of Alaska, where the largest investor in the state itself, and it goes to our UGF, our social services. And that's continuing cycle from the returns on those businesses. So again, from our investment, we'd be able to grow our balance sheet. We'd be able to continue to invest in the state of Alaska. So with that being highlighted, I do want to hand it over to Dave and to Jesse to talk about some of the details specifically on the proposed Wesusitna Access Phase Three in utilization of the 8.5 million that's been designated by Alaska's legislature through the governor's legislation, HB 69.
Madam Mayor, Assembly, members of the public, thanks for having us. Again, just as Alan said, real quick, highlight of the project overview. As you know, we've been here a couple times before in earlier phases, but for calendaring purposes, we really wrapped up Phase Two back in March. And it wasn't until we were recently given the appropriation and accepted it in our October board meeting that we were able to get going again. So just to let people know, we haven't been actively working yet. There has been a pause since March. But now that we have this eight and a half million appropriated to us, and we're looking to move forward again, this is why we're getting started. So those two phases that we've done previously, Jesse will be speaking to shortly. I just wanted to mention also that the last couple of Matsu Borough resolutions in support of what we're doing here helped to assist us in this next phase. And this next phase that we're bringing forth tonight really kicks off, and you'll see this throughout the presentation, proposed and feasibility studies. This takes us to the ability to apply for permits, and then to be able to fund the environmental impact statement and get us to a record of decision. That's not construction. That's just moving us through the next phase. Any large project has multiple sets of really progressive elaboration. We keep getting smarter. We keep uncovering more things. We keep learning more. And throughout this next phase, there is a lot, this is really intense, on our public participation process. This is when the cultural resources engagement takes place, and this is also where hydrology happens, lots more field studies, and we start to do pre-design engineering. So that's what this next phase is all about.
Hi, I'm Brad Swartz. I work for the Borough as the pre-design and engineering division manager. I want to talk a little bit about the proposed project location. For some of you, this may be a new project, so I'll start at the south end. As you're out on Point McKenzie Road, you end up on Ayrshire Road, which heads towards the Little Susitna Boat Launch, run by Fish and Game. The proposed beginning of the project is about a mile north of that, upriver on the, or let's see, it'd be, yeah, upriver on the Little Susitna. It would cross the Little Susitna. And then the route passes through the Fish Creek Management Area, which is, the majority of the ownership of that land is Borough and state, which also encompasses forestry and agricultural areas. Route then crosses, goes north and crosses the Big Susitna River, and from there, it heads west towards the Mount Susitna and Beluga Mountain area. And around milepost 56 of the road, it would cross the Squentna River, about 13 miles upstream of the confluence with the Yantna River. Once it crosses the Squentna River, it swings west about another 44 miles and ends in the Happy River and Portage Creek mining areas. Next slide talks about why the project is needed. Proxima, you know, if you're familiar with the Borough boundaries, almost half of the Borough lies in this area that we're talking about, and it's, has no roads in that area. It's completely inaccessible by road. There's resources that are in that area, including minerals, gas, many much recreational acreage, forestry, agriculture resources, as we talked about before. A portion of the resources could be developed with freight traffic flowing to the port, so it's a benefit to our port. Other resources mentioned here would create additional jobs, businesses, and lots of income for the Borough residents.
Thanks, Brad. My name's Jesse Peterson, project manager for Ada, and also an 18-year resident of the Borough, so I know the area well. This slide right here is taken from our preliminary economic impact statement that we did do in-house, just to kind of highlight the potential there. And what I like about this slide is that it shows the value of the hard rock mining, and there's employment counts there compared against the coal, compared against the timber. So you can really see the value that the hard rock mining brings to the employment. And you can also see the wages that are paid as well. And again, this was taken directly from our in-house preliminary economic impact report that we just completed. So one of the key priorities for us is understanding the stakeholder priorities, and that's reaching out to the public and really addressing what their concerns are. And I would like to add that this is our second time in front of the Assembly this year. Brad and I have also met with the Big Lake Community Council. We also met with the Port McKenzie Community Council, and two or three times with the Fish and Wildlife Commission this year. And as David mentioned, we stopped work in March. We didn't do anything this year until we got appropriation, and now we're back in front of you. So we've had six opportunities for public engagement, and we weren't actively working on the project. We recognize how important that is, and we're constantly looking ways to improve the engagement with the public, and we certainly welcome feedback, and we'll get better moving forward. So also with the stakeholder priorities, it's important for us to understand the protection of fish and waterfowl habitat, and also the cultural and environmentally sensitive areas around the Wesusitna Basin. So just to kind of recap, the Phase Two that we completed in March, back in June of 2020, we had approached the Assembly with the MOU for Phase Two. That was approved. We went out and started, we executed work in August of 2020, and we wrapped up our work in September of 2020. And we completed it in, completed all our preliminary engineering in March of 2021, when we presented those conclusions to you formally in the Assembly meeting. And the results of those two, of Phase Two study was, we advanced the preliminary engineering enough to have an idea of what the capital cost would be. And we also conducted wetland mapping and baseline environmental studies to put the project in position to potentially file for a 404 permit. So just to kind of get into some of the characteristics of the projects, through the 2020 field season, we did identify 156 mapped stream crossings. We categorized them in a GIS database. We categorized the streams based on the stream width and fish passages. We boiled it down to 11 bridges and 145 culverts. And I really want to highlight, too, that all of our information, every deliverable that we've produced, is available on our website. So everything that we have done to date is available to the public on our website at that address right there. So what came out of the preliminary studies was a preliminary cost estimate between 300 million and 400 million. And this just kind of goes through some of the details of what that high-level estimate includes. So we figured the bridges between 350 and 450 bucks per square foot. We've got roadway costs based on cut fill quantities. We've got drainage and culverts at 5% of the total cost. We got 25% construction contingency, which is pretty healthy. We figured, you know, environmental permitting and design, about 13% of the total overall cost, and the actual construction admin to administer and manage this project at 15%. And so all those costs are all inclusive in that preliminary range, between 300 and 400 million. So what's next? Here's our proposed project schedule. So we're anticipating that we're going to submit a 404 permit application sometime next year in 2022. That's going to trigger the NEPA and the EIS process, which we're anticipating to take between two and three years. Assuming that that goes through the approval process, and we have a successful NEPA application, then it'll go to permitting and engineering, and the earliest potential that construction could begin would be 2028. And so this next phase, really this next, what we were referring to as Phase Three, the next steps here, we're going to have ongoing public engagement. We have, we just received RFPs from engineering firms, and we're going to get a contractor on board here the first part of the year to help us complete the baseline studies. We're going to identify mitigation and avoidance opportunities of wetlands. We're going to advance the engineering. We're going to identify and explore alternative routes. Hopefully submit say a 404 permit application and start the process of performing an environmental impact analysis. So that's our next steps. That's Wesusitna project, and I'd like to open it up to any questions you may have.
Okay, okay, this is an assembly meeting. We need to stop talking out in the audience. Thank you.
Sure. That's enough. The time for public participation is finished. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so discussion from the Assembly, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I know in this last year, we've asked Ada to come to the community councils, like they mentioned, they came to Big Lake, and they've also come out to Point MAC, community council meetings. I've seen that they were pretty easy to get a hold of and to actually come out and talk to the folks about what they're doing and how they're doing it. My understanding is, and correct me please, that really they're not even into the outreach part of this whole project. They are just now getting into that part where they're really going to outreach and tell all the public exactly how it's going. Is that my understanding? With each phase, Ada and the Borough, I really want to highlight that we're working together, have been engaging the public. We had different meetings that were set up for Phase One. We had follow-up meetings for Phase Two. As it has been highlighted, that what has been identified and commented on is that there hasn't been any engagement over the last few months because we have not been active on the project during that time period. We've been waiting for the legislature and with the governor's bill to be identified, to know what sorts of funds are for us to be able to then accept those funds and make a proposal. At this point in time, that's exactly what's happened, is we accepted those funds through our board meeting on October 27th. We're immediately engaging with Matsu Borough staff to set up the information and for this meeting to present to the Assembly to follow up. We did have, and I want to highlight, we did have some preliminary discussions during this year, which identified the need to put together a preliminary economic assessment. You know, what was the advantages? What were the benefits ultimately that could be achieved by the Borough? That's what we did engage on, and we presented that information, and we've posted that publicly for everyone to review. The road itself, the way it's being proposed, is for multi-use access. A lot of the discussion has been about one particular mine development, but the purpose of this road, the need and the purpose of the road itself is to provide access to, as is identified by Brad, inaccessible areas within the Matsu Borough for multi-use resources that are within the Borough's property or the state's resource properties. So that is the fundamental need and purpose of the road. The engagement that we're doing at this point to go forward, and what we're highlighting, the next steps and utilizing the funds that were defined by the legislature, is to go through the full pre-permitting process, finalizing the field work that was initiated in Phases One and Phases Two, to be able to do the full environmental analysis, to present a full, robust application for a 404 permit. It would then go through a very full and robust review process by the reviewing federal agency, which we anticipate in this case to be the core, but we don't know if that is definitively the case until we submit the application. So that is the process that we're taking. That's the public engagement that we have undertaken. I respectfully submit, it's incorrect to say that we have not been engaging the public. Should we be engaging more? The Matsu Borough staff and Ada have had full conversations on that with the receipt of those funds and initiation of it. My understanding, and what we fully support, is that the Assembly has already adopted funding that would be contributed by the Matsu Borough for this particular project, which is focused solely to support that stakeholder engagement, which we think is and has been identified is essential.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I have a few questions, and forgive me, it's been kind of a long evening, so if they aren't as articulate as they should be. So a couple just questions. So on this chart with the economic benefits, the number of employees, is that, it just seems like, I guess I don't have the numbers in front. the number of employees, is that, it just seems like, I guess I don't have the numbers in front of me of how many work in the state. Is that like a one year? We're thinking 1,000 people working at the mine or is that over a multi-year?
That is the number of people annually that would be employed. And it's a very preliminary number, right? Based upon the assessment of the resources that we know are accessible along the principal route that we have defined. Doesn't mean that there would be alternative routes that ultimately get defined within the final application that comes through. Just to clarify that particular point. The issue is the annual employment, right? What we have seen and we believe would be the case for the employment that's represented in that preliminary report is that it would be representative of what we've seen across the state of Alaska. It's incorrect based upon the facts to say that it's non-Alaskans that are being employed. By example, when I highlighted with the Red Dog Mine, that's 600 annual employees. 500 are permanent. It increases up to 100 on temporary employees that are brought in for seasonal port activity work. 54% of the employees that are working at the Red Dog Mine are NANA shareholders. It would be incorrect to say that those funds are going outside of the state. The significant majority, the remainder of the workers at that workforce are Alaskans. A large part will live and work, or live and their families are here in your borough. When you talk about the Greens Creek Mine, Hogo Mine, other mines that are investments that are by, they're not Alaskan companies, but they are Alaskan subsidiaries of other large, you know, global or in some cases US or Canadian mining companies. They have long histories of involvement and employment in Alaska. These are longstanding mineral activity, resource developments, employment, economic development, employment opportunities for the state.
So Red Dog employs about 600 people. You're estimating the mining in this area would employ, I can't quite tell, but 1,400 direct? Plus 1,000 more? Extra indirect and induced? Is that correct?
You're looking at the, at a summary, right? That was made, a chart that was made. We have a much broader report that's attached with that that goes into the distinction between the construction activity, then ultimately to the operation. But keep in mind, please, it's the broader employment from all the resources that have been identified that are accessible through the access route we've defined.
Okay, so I'm just looking at hard rock mining. I'm looking at, it says hard rock mining, then it says coal mining, and then it says timber harvest. So I'm assuming this is the estimate of hard rock mining employment?
Yes.
Okay.
Talking about the annual employment direct. Right, for multiple mine, from the total resources. And then talking about the breakdown to annual employment that's indirect.
Okay.
Right? And then you have the annual employment. I think this must be on the, that's the induced, right? So that's the ancillary services ultimately that are coming from the full broader economic impact. It's the ripple effect.
And then two others just clarifying if I may. So you're eight, on this chart you're showing your process. This eight and a half million is going to carry you through where on this? You expect it all the way through the NEPA/EIS process or to the beginning that wasn't?
What we're anticipating is that with the total funding that's available of eight and a half million, assuming it's fully available for this permitting process is that that would take us through the end of the EIS to achieve a recorded decision. So it's to fund the final work that's necessary in preparing the application, submitting the application and then supporting all of the environmental assessments and reports that are necessary to conclude a recorded decision.
Okay, so kind of somewhere between these two? Am I understanding right?
The end of this.
The end of that, okay.
Yeah.
And then we heard a couple of different figures about the road costs. So just a clarification on the 350 million, is that estimate based on a, I know, and I know you've talked about a public-private road, that it would be public for a portion of it and private for a portion of it. But is that 350 million estimate, which I realize is rough, based on a fully private road standard? Is it based on that concept of having it public to, where did you say, across the Big Sioux and then private from there?
The 350 million dollar number, right? Between 350, 400 million was the initial assessment that was completed at the end of Phase Two for the construction, you know, for the total cost of the road along the route that was defined and was highlighted by Brad, going from Ashar Road ultimately to the Yetna Mining District. It, Jesse, is it based upon solely a private or did it incorporate public elements to it?
There's public elements. It's industrial access. We have designs that's selected.
Yeah, why don't you come up and explain that?
Yeah, so it's an industrial access, multi-user corridor is what we designed. And so there is public elements to it. While I wouldn't say that it has guardrail or signage, it is still acceptable for low volume rural vehicles. So.
Okay, that's super helpful.
If I could conclude on that, just to clarify is that we followed that up based upon the input from the Assembly. Because when we presented Phase Two, it was modified by the Assembly to ensure that we are incorporating public access components of the road. So that is the assessment that we've made. For us to be able to make the final application ultimately with the, for the 404 permit, we will need to define the specific components that are the public access and how those public safety elements are going to be incorporated into the road development.
Okay, I do have a few other questions, but I will cede if to Assemblywoman McKee.
Yeah, I'm G. McKee. I've got some questions. How long ago did NOVO start this thing? How long have they been planning this thing?
How long did?
How long has NOVO, is it NOVO, isn't it, that the company, that the Australian mining company has been?
NOVA Minerals has leases that are out in the Yetna Mining District. They are not developing a road.
Okay, but how long had they been looking at this project?
The, as far as I, they've been working with us as of Phase Two. They're involved in that portion of it.
But I mean, they in particular, how long? Okay, so it's like when they went to drill up north, they got a good idea how much oil was in there in Annelieska. They, all of these folks got together and said, let's do this. I'm kind of wondering how long NOVA has been planning this. And what bothers me is if it's been some time and they still haven't been able to get a partnership together that's viable?
Through the, through the mayor, you jumped into some conclusions of which I think are incorrect.
That's okay. That's why I'm asking.
If I could clarify, please, right? We have engaged with the Matsu Borough and initially with some private, some of the resource owners that were along the route on what would be defined for, and advancing ultimately what was initiated as the Department of Transportation's road to Resources. This was one of their projects. The Yetna Mining District has been defined. We know through the DNR's leasing process who's engaged and who's ultimately taken on those leases. NOVA Minerals has to be one of them that took on some of the mining leases or made the close claims. There's other parties that are out within the Yetna Mining District. I know there's a lot of concentration on NOVA Minerals, but this is a multi-use, multi-access road. So it's all the development that's going on in the Yetna Mining District. The Yetna Mining District has been known since the early 60s development that was happening in the 70s. UGS studies that were undertaken by the state or by, well, by UGS and by then also by DNR and the state. The mining, the mineral content is known. Leases were sold by the state for development. So they're independently developing those leases. We are looking at advancing the road development, which would ultimately give broader access to not just the Yetna Mining District, but the other resources that are along the route that gets there. That's what we're looking to develop.
If they weren't, if this project, this NOVA thing had never, if it wasn't going anywhere, would we be involved in building this road at all?
We would still be looking at the road because of the resources that it's giving access to and looking for development of those resources.
I'm not sure that that's a chicken or egg thing. I really, and I'm open to any of this, but that's why I'm asking these questions. Because like when Annelieska decided that their project was worth it, they got some partners together and they built a road and they didn't ask anybody for any help. And it kind of feels to me like they're saying to the residents of the state and the borough, gee whiz, a few folks have just built this road. Look at all the benefits that you'd get. But oh, by the way, we'd get our mine in here. And that's great, but what if at some point, we don't, this is going to be really spendy because I've heard things from like 350 to 400 million to $532 million to build this road. If you're working on a project labor agreement, which you would be if you, if any borough or state money is involved in this thing, that's a lot of money. So I guess what I'm saying here is if it's really a worthwhile project, my opinion, I'm a very individualistic person. I think the company, if they think it's worth it, should build a road all by itself. And just like Annelieska did, made a lot of money, tremendous benefit to the state of Alaska. But I'm just thinking, we are going into something, right now, I just want, I understand you just want us to kind of promote this thing. But I can't get behind it because I don't really understand it.
Can I, can I address some of the points and conclusions that are being made? Because again, to relate the road, you're relating it to a pipeline that was put together by a consortium of oil companies based upon oil development, which had not been developed yet. Okay, the resources were known. They were making the investments ultimately in exploration into it. And at the same time, define the fact that they needed to create a pipeline to have access for exporting it. So they happened concurrently on the development. And so I would ask you, please look at that history and you will see that there's a lot of similarity of what we're talking about with road development and access development within the state of Alaska. We're doing the same thing in the way that we're addressing the Ambler Access Project. The mineral content is known. The leases have been sold. There are companies that are doing exploration. You need to do some initial exploration work and prove out, do your pre-feasibility, get to a feasibility independently of your access, your pipeline, your road, for your own investment, for their own investment decisions. So as an example, with the Ambler Access Project, which again is a road, is 211 miles, road development going to a mining district. The mines themselves are not in operation because if you're in operation, your core concentrate has nowhere to go. They have no ability to get equipment out there to do the development, right? So elements of access need to be developed as they're doing the pre-feasibility, as they're doing the feasibility and the mine development. That's what is occurring in this case with this road development. By us being able to pursue, we have funds that are now available to ultimately pursue the full permitting, to do it environmentally correctly in determining the road access and being able to apply that to, for the permitting. It's one step in the pre-feasibility that's necessary in defining access. While at the same time, the mineral, the resource content owners, some of them are mineral owners. You heard from a timber resource party who's looking for road access. That road isn't built yet for him to develop or have access to those, to that timber. But they are developing their projects at the same time that we're developing this project. This is one stage of it. The road is not looking to be constructed today. We're looking to do the permitting, the same way those resource parties are looking to do their permitting. So they are advancing it. And the information that we have is that having, being able to advance this project at this stage gives them confidence to continue to do more investment because they know that there is the potential of this access that would facilitate their development. It's all in step. It's the same way that the Annelieska Pipeline, as you referenced, has been developed. It's not that oil was sitting there waiting for four years for the pipeline to ultimately be built and then flow through. It was done concurrently. And we're looking to do the same in Ambler. This is the earlier stage of the same element of development for Wesasitna, for the Wesasitna Access Road. It's, in order to have resources, develop those resources, you need to have access ultimately to them. And that's what we're trying to define.
And probably that's where you and I diverge because I'm looking at a private company developing mineral extraction for primarily its own benefit. And hopefully like with the pipeline, the rest of us benefited as well. But in this one, it seems to me that if this were really as good a deal as people are saying, as Ada is saying and NOVA was saying, somehow or another, they would have found their partners. And, but I still think that if we, if that mine had, that, all that hadn't come up, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. The hope is that everything comes together all at the same time. How do you get in and out of Red Dog? Do they have roads or you got to fly in there and?
There was, there was no access initially as a cost of view, right? There's no road network that's there.
So you didn't have to worry about building a road or anything like that? You just got this place plunked down and?
No, you had to build the road for there to be access to the mine to be able to deliver the ore content, store it at a port. We had to build a port. We had to build the road for them to then build the mine.
Okay.
And that's what we're highlighting here is that this is, you're focused on one individual mine, NOVA Minerals, which has a series of leases that are up in the Yetna Mining District. But there are multiple mining companies that have interest in the Yetna Mining District. There are multiple companies that are, have other resources. There are, you know, we have on the timber side, there is opportunities that are on agriculture when you have the access that's being developed. There are oil and gas leases that would have access or some type of opportunity for development. It's not one mine, one road for them. And that's a very important issue because by us being involved, meaning Ada, the Matsu Borough, and with state funding that's being defined as for it, we need to make sure that there's accountability, that there's broader access than just one development. We're not building it for one mine. We are proposing a road, a road access ultimately that is for resources that are along the route. So there is, there is broader economic development that is for the Matsu Borough and ultimately for the state. That's why the number of jobs we're highlighting is not related to one mine. So it's difficult to address what you're particularly highlighting about the concerns about that one party being able to develop their own road when we're developing a road for the broader network of resources that are out there, which includes recreation for your constituents, which includes access to state, you know, or the Matsu Borough property development, how you define it. There's those opportunities that you're also not including in that analysis.
And I sure don't want to, if anybody ever wants to shut me down, just go ahead and do that.
We have two other.
Okay, hopefully we'll be able to talk about this again.
Okay.
Thank you kindly.
Okay, Assemblyman Rob Yon.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a few questions. See if maybe we could, some of the concerns from people who spoke earlier, if we could try to get some answers to some of those. So, so is it possible, and you'll have to, you'll have to bear with me, it's mining is not my area of expertise. Is it possible, so they talked about trucking everything out of there into a mineral or to a place where they would process it. Is it possible to process everything on location and cut down on the traffic where they'd be actually removing less material on the road? Is that possible?
With, broadly speaking, with mineral development, you have concentration that happens, that processing that happens at mine site. So what ultimately gets transported on the roads, and I really can't speak to the number of trucks that have been identified by different parties because we don't have, internally, we do not have a number. We don't have the, we don't have the full information on the volumes to define what the number of roads are, or number of trucks that are occurring on the road. But what I can highlight to you is that in mineral development itself, that concentration does generally occur at mine site. And you have concentrate itself, which is what is being shipped or trucked ultimately for port, for export. Because you're talking about a loading up vessels that are in large part being taken out to different processing areas or smelting operations that do not themselves have that processing capability, you know, the concentration capability. So the cost of shipment is reduced.
Thank you.
By concentrating at mine site.
That makes sense. Thank you. And then moving on to the next one. So the ICE road that they've been using, I assume that's to go in there and do test holes and exploratory stuff. But I imagine that they couldn't use the ICE road to remove all of the product then seasonally. Where has that been looked at? Do they have to have the road to remove everything? Or is that something else that we need to do the third phase of the study to figure out?
Well, I'm not able to address your question because the ICE road that you're referring to is related to one resource owner's development and the way that they've been exporting equipment and being able to do exploration. exporting equipment and being able to do exploration. We're talking about the development of road access, which is to multiple resources that are within and have been identified within the borough and state property in the area. So for us, in the way of our analysis, the, the road access is, you know, really to that multi-use, that broader element, and would provide year-round, all-season development for those resources.
Thank you. And speaking of the year-round and, and supplying multiple different mines and, and multiple different possible users, who, who would be responsible for the maintenance and the security of the road?
That, that is a, a question.
Or is that yet to be determined?
Well, we, we're in the process of trying to determine that exactly because it relates to which portions of the road are private and which portions of the road are public. And again, I would remind that, that we have been pursuing public access based upon the requirements and changes to the Matsui Borough Assembly in the recent agreement, which was last year that was completed. So what I, what we have identified in every time that we have been asked this question is the fact that if it's under a private-public partnership structure, which would be utilizing a usage fee for the road, then it would be maintained through the, the assessment of that usage fee by the private users of the road itself. That's for the, the public-private partnership portion of the road. And that would be ultimately how Ada, in its function as the Development Finance Authority within the state, our mission, our statutes enable us to enter into partnerships with private sector companies for this type of public funding, that that's how those costs, ongoing operations and maintenance would be covered. The portions that are defined to be within the public, that would be undertaken by the state. This.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, last question here then is, and we spoke about Red Dog Mine just as an example. I have a lot of friends that have worked there in the past, family, um, Alaskan residents, as you mentioned earlier. Um, but I'm curious, and, and again, I just, I don't understand, it's, it's not my area of expertise, does the state, other than jobs, does the state actually make fees or commissions off of the material that's extracted out of the ground? Is there a commission structure that's set up with that mine? And would there be with this one where the state would actually recover money?
Well, certainly, but the, the state is, is ultimately the owner of those resources, which it, through these leases, allows private development to happen. So the state is, basically accrues a royalty on mineral content. Same way with oil and gas. 25% of that royalty that the state collects goes to your permanent fund. Same element. It goes to the, every resident's future endowment through the permanent fund, at least 25% of it. The other portion of it goes to the state's UGF, right, for our social services that are ongoing. So that is the component that the state receives ultimately for that. What the benefit that has come into the Matsui Borough is from the increased tax base from the economic development that's happening within the, within the area, the jobs that are being created, the businesses that are ultimately being created and the services that are coming from that, the property taxes from an increased population, right, expansion that's occurring in that case. Those are the broader benefits that are coming to the Matsui Borough by, you know, every element of economic development. That's why we highlight, our mission is solely about economic development, jobs, uh, jobs and, and economic diversity within the state of Alaska. That's why we're focused on these types of access projects because that's what it is intended and designed to deliver tangible benefits on.
Okay.
Thank you. And so I, I, I don't have any more questions, but I, I'll end my, uh, comments and questions with this is, you know, I'm, I'm a developer, right? I'm the, I'm actually the president of the Alaska State Home Builders Association right now. So I'm very, I'm very pro-jobs and very pro-development, but I, I want to caution everybody that I'm also very pro-environment, moose, fish especially. Um, I'm going to support moving forward with the next phase of the study because I can't make a good decision in the future without all of the facts. I don't think anybody can on any side. And I, I do believe we need to move forward, uh, with the next portion of the study so that we can get answers to not just my questions or other assembly members, but to everybody's. But I, I just, I want to caution everybody involved moving forward that, um, I'm going to need to see very, 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 very detailed, um, reports and techniques as to how we're not going to affect habitat, moose, fish, et cetera. Um, so anyways, I, I appreciate you guys' time tonight. Uh, I hope you don't think I was picking on you with my questions. I just, like I said, I, you know, I'm pro-development, I'm pro-jobs, but I'm also very pro-environment and protecting, uh, the future of the Matsui Borough. So with that, I'll, I'll end mine. Thanks.
Assemblyman Yon.
Thank you through the mayor. You guys picked the one night, we, like, we've been done by nine, like, every meeting. Um, you know, I guess we're, I, I look at it and I appreciate the other questions and the answers. This is largely a state project, largely on state land, and you aren't really asking the borough for money, but you, you are going across borough land. Um, there are some borough interests here and there's borough residents affected. So, you know, I look, I, I know a big issue is whether it's a public or private road. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I do question selling us on the port when timber and coal just aren't there in big numbers, um, subject to, you know, your analysis showing they are, and the gold would likely be flown out of there. Um, so, um, the other portion is this, this public-private road and how our residents feel about it. Like, I participated in the last public meeting and like you said, I, you've been, haven't done much for a while, and I was, I was part of those meetings, seemed like there were a lot of questions raised, um, including sort of, um, the public not feeling like they had been notified. Um, and as far as I know, it hasn't been any sort of follow-up since then. So my biggest question moving forward is kind of a two-part, whether, um, especially on that public-private road, I would love to get residents' input on that, what they think about it. I don't know that that came up at all in the last public meeting. I saw if we could have some kind of public process for that, or if we move forward with this, what is the process, and, and maybe Ada can speak to it, and staff, what is the process to make sure residents have some ability, some input before you move to a, a permitting process for, you know, a road that is public on one end and private on the other, and then you, you know, you get to the end of that and you find out people don't even support it. So, um, does it make sense to, to push this out another month and have that kind of public process where we get to hear from residents specifically on that issue and other concerns? Or is there, if we move forward, can you speak to what exactly will allow the residents of the valley to have input that will go in before this EIS permit gets applied for?
Yeah, I, well, if, if, if I could ask a question, um, how would we pursue that? Because what we've been engaging on is direction from the Matsui Borough Assembly on this. Right? Because with the way that we presented it earlier, which has always, well, let's say it was initiated under a public-private partnership approach, because we were looking at the, the same process that we took with Red Dog, the same process we're taking with Ambler. Uh, the involvement with the Matsui Assembly highlighted the need for there to be public access. We've been incorporating that public access into it. So we've, we have been undertaking, you know, that input and pursuing it. This would be continuing to pursue that input and defining out what those particular components are of public access ultimately, and would be private operation, which I thought was looking to address the concerns that were also raised about how maintenance was going to be taken care of for the proposed road infrastructure. So I, my, my question is, how would we implement what you're asking for when we've been taking your input?
Go ahead.
So, um, those questions have come up, but I don't know, now that you've talked about making a public road to, over the Big Sioux and private after that, I don't remember that ever being part of any public input discussion. In the last one I was aware of, where there was public input discussion was like a December pandemic has all run together of last year. So like, between, you know, somewhere in this process, is there time to get together with the community and do a follow-up since that last, since sort of nothing has been happening? Does that make sense? I, I don't know if, if staff already has a plan or if staff at the borough could speak to the plans for public engagement, but it seems like some things of the project have, um, changed and it's worth getting that public input before we go too far down the line. So is that part of this if we go forward tonight? Is there room to do that? Or does it make sense to wait a month and get that, get some public input?
Assemblyman Yon, I believe that there's, there's always room for public engagement. And what we're, we're undertaking right now is to get the full data, being able to analyze that data and really define out how we would propose to, to ultimately have a robust submission for a NEPA application, right, with the federal agency. So during that process, is there an opportunity for us to undertake what I, I think you yourself initiated, which was the proposal ultimately to have some funding for stakeholder engagement and utilize that? I think there's, there's certainly room to do that for us to, but, but for us to, within the next month, to tell you, this is the assessment of the data when we don't, we haven't completed that, to then have a full discussion on that would be very preliminary and would need to be followed up. And then all it would highlight is that that would be a public process implementation over the time period ultimately before we submit the application anyway, wouldn't it?
Follow-up?
Thanks. So when you submit the application, it's going to have a makeup of the road, whether it's public or private?
It will need to have that full.
So if we don't get the public input before that, and I just know that was a major issue, then, um, I feel like we're going forward with something we haven't gotten the residents' input on. So if we could schedule something before you go forward with that, so we have the opportunity for the public to give some feedback on whether they support that. I mean, that was kind of a big, that was a big issue that I heard was people wanting this to be a public road now. Would they, how would they feel about it being partially public and then private? If you're out in those areas, is a private road better than a public? Does the general public support that? So is there room to do that, um, in a practical way in the next two months before you go or whenever? It looks like you're on a pretty tight timeline to get the EIS, um, in. That's, I'm just looking at from a borough perspective, what folks have expressed concern about and giving them the opportunity to give that feedback to Ada before you move forward with the EIS and then find out that's not something that the, the residents are totally supportive.
If, if we could have the, a, a, a well-defined understanding of what it is that we needed to get that engagement on, then we can incorporate that into the process. The, the ability to do that within the next month is preliminary, is what I want to highlight. To be able to do it through the process as we're pulling the final information together and then present that, uh, I think we can look into our timeline and see how we can arrange it. But it does, I, I, I do really want to highlight that the definition between private and public and incorporating public elements is, again, following input that we've received from the assembly itself. So I, I don't know why, I, I don't, I'm trying myself to understand that that's not, then itself, by incorporating that, not itself supported by the assembly because it is adopting that portion of it. But now we need to define exactly what other elements are to it. All I'm looking for is distinct definition of what it is that we are to accomplish.
I don't want to monopolize. I just, I don't have any memory of the assembly or staff weighing in, except that the public expressed concern about it being a public road. But this hybrid option, I don't believe the assembly has weighed in on that, at least I have no memory of that. So if somebody else has a different memory, um, I just, if this goes forward, I'd like to see something, I, I guess I'm not hearing a clear answer. If the borough is responsible for the public process and we do something in the next two months, is that with Ada, is that helpful for you moving forward? Or is that too late to influence what you're moving forward with, with the EIS? Is there room for that public input if we move forward?
I, I do believe there's room for that public input, but we would, again, all I'm asking is for some specific understanding from the assembly of what, what we are to, to do with that information and how we, how we implement it. It has a, it has a significant impact in the way that we are ultimately submitting this application. And we try to identify that. The last time we had this engagement with the MOU, when it was, word drafting was, was implemented by the assembly that incorporated the requirement to understate, undertake a review of public elements of the road. So it has broad aspects to it. It is, it has cost elements that are to it. And what we're trying to do is take the data that we have, being able to implement it to what can be best utilized by the private resource owners that, that provide some economic development ultimately in support for the road development itself, but also incorporate components that are acceptable to the assembly. And we've been working with as our partner, the Matsui Borough staff, and relying upon their input on that particular points. So it's, I, I, you know, again, I just, we're looking for clear direction because of, as you highlighted, the limited time period that's in this case, of how we are to incorporate that and what we do then following up with that information, what would be required. It's a, it, it just seems to be a, a unfortunate moving target, right, that we're trying to eliminate in the process.
And I would just say, I wouldn't want to be in a situation of promoting a project that the residents say, we don't like the private-public, uh, hybrid option. So I'd like to hear from the public, sort of how they feel about that before we sort of sanction you to move forward. I think there's value in hearing that and getting a sense of that before we sanction moving forward with the project, moving then find out residents want the whole road to be public, the whole project. But I think we've gone around and around and I don't want to monopolize it. So I, it, hopefully that explains a little bit more.
Deputy Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so I, um, I do recall some discussion about that at the last meeting on this, and I think there was some comment as to, there's really no reason to have a public road right up to a mine, um, like the public doesn't need to be going and entering mine sites. So at the very least, that, you know, large portions of the road, of the road wouldn't make sense to be public, you know? But as far as it goes, I mean, really what Ada's here asking for, as far as I can tell, is to be allowed to continue with the public process, uh, submitting a, a US Army Corps of Engineers 404 permit, that is a public process. NEPA, EIS, um, you know, environmental impact study, that's a public process. I mean, they're not asking us to go out and just start building this thing tomorrow or something, they're asking to continue the public process. These are the public process. So I, I mean, I guess I, I'm confused as to what we're asking other, you know, why, why not allow them to continue? What is the public process?
I don't know what the 50,000 goes for then. Is it to let people know about the NEPA process and the EIS? We, we have 50,000 to do a public process. What is that go toward in this?
I've got no clue.
Yeah, just a minute. We have two, I have two other people, two other assembly people have been waiting for some time. Um, but Deputy Mayor, I think we need to move to extend the meeting.
Uh, move to extend the meeting to 11:00 PM?
Okay. Is there any objections? Okay, all righty. Assemblyman Hale, thank you for your patience, sir.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, to the gentleman, please, um, detail exactly what public engagement you folks have done since we signed the Phase 2 MOU, please.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you please answer the question? I'm sorry, could you please ask the question again? I didn't understand exactly which phase of the, we were, we were to give.
Yeah, please, please, please detail for us all of the public engagement you have done since the signing of the Phase Two.
Okay.
Jesse, if I could ask if you could give the summary again?
Sure. This is Jesse Peterson, project manager for ADA. So since the signing of MOU II back in June of 2020, we have had the, we had a, a, a public meeting, a virtual public meeting in December of 2020. We have had at least three or four Fish and Wildlife Commission meetings that Brad and I have participated in. We had the formal conclusion of Phase Two in March of 2021 this year. This is, and then Brad and I also gave presentations to Port McKenzie Community Council and also to the Big Lake Community Council. And then we're before you today, second time this year, presenting on this next phase of the project. So since, I would say, since Phase Two was signed in, in June of 2020, it's been at least more than half a dozen public engagement opportunities that we've offered up to the Matsu Borough.
Thank you.
Okay, Assemblyman Ron, there, okay.
Good evening. I've got a few questions here. How many miles is state-owned, will the road be going through state-owned property?
It's going through state-owned and Matsu Borough-owned property, but predominantly it's state. It's 211 mi, I'm sorry, not 200, it's 100 miles. Yeah, it's a 100-mile road.
So 100 miles of state-owned? The, Jesse, do you know the full delineation?
No, it's about 80 miles.
Okay, so 20 miles in borough-owned?
It's basically east of the Big Sioux.
But 20 miles of it would be borough, 80 for 100, right? And then how many miles of wetland or swamp? What kind of terrain? I've heard a lot of different numbers.
You know, I, I would have to go back and really quantify that because that's not how we, we don't look at it as a linear basis there. But I can tell you that we did our best to avoid quite a bit of the wetlands out there. And it's actually surprising that, you know, we were able to minimize the crossings the way that we did. We know that that land is wet out there. We know it's a swamp. We know that gravel's hard to find. I mean, all the, all the issues that were brought up for, on reasons why it's difficult to build, we understand that.
Sure.
You know, and so, and really, we've, we've picked the best route to accommodate construction and minimize the, the wetlands impacts. So.
Okay. And then estimated revenue for the borough off something like this?
We provided a full economic report, which I believe was attached to the information that was presented. Yeah. So it's, the, the breakdown is, is within that report where we're identifying on a preliminary assessment. What I would, would highlight is that, you know, for, in making that assessment, we use what's commonly available economic development software, which makes assessments on, based upon resources, average number of jobs, the follow-on tax, you know, benefits that ultimately come for, for the local boroughs, as then, as well as defining out the state's royalties amounts. So there's a breakdown that's within that full report on that.
And while they're looking up that number, if, any estimate on maintenance for a year, just a yearly maintenance number on road maintenance?
That really depends upon the, this, this gets down to what is aspects which are private, you know, a, a user fee, you know, sponsored road, and the specs that are defined, that are defined for that road, as well as what is then on the public side and then, and the specifications that are ultimately for that road development. So that is what's being finalized right now in this phase to ultimately be submitted with the information for the NEPA application. We need to present to them the full, the full, you know, assessment of cost and how it's going to be operated going forward when we make that application.
Okay. How about, how many average, or how many miles would an average citizen be able to drive?
So if I can address your earlier question, right, and again, this is within the report that we provided that was attached with the information. There is a, a initial assumption here of local tax payment to the Matsu Borough of close to $20 million. So in benefit from the development.
Yearly? Yearly?
Yes.
Yes, it's total annual. So yearly. Okay. And then how many miles could an average citizen drive out of this 100 miles?
That, that's part of the.
Sit a little to the Big Sioux and turn around, or am I taking my family on a Sunday drive and?
That is part of what we're trying to determine and ultimately delineate with the application. And then it's, it's, you know, it's a fair point that Assemblymen Summer highlighted is that there is that public process as well that goes on with all the engagement with, once our application is done. It's a very robust public process, which is in addition to obviously what we need to engage on, what, what Assemblyman Nowers is, Assemblyman Nowers has highlighted in that case.
Sure.
So when you're talking about what portion can be transversed by a resident, right, in access of the public access road itself versus the private, we don't have the full definition of that yet. That's what we're currently concluded based upon finalizing what that economic, or I'm sorry, the environmental impact would be. Broadly speaking, what we believe would be the, the, at least the current assessment, is that public access would occur through a public bridge across the Big Sioux. And then at that point in time, it would be private use infrastructure going out to the mining district or reaching out to the mining district. And in that way, providing the benefits for that resource development, but then also providing the access that we, we, we took to be the case with input as well from the Matsu Borough staff of the access requirements of the borough.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Assemblywoman D, you had questions some time ago? Do you still have a question or comment?
Well, I do, but I, I think maybe let somebody else go ahead. I have probably 42 questions. But I don't want to do that to us. I'm just, I'm afraid to just, just say, well, we're going to do it or we're not, because there's an awful lot of questions just right up here on this stage.
Okay. And Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I call the question.
Okay. So now do you vote on the call of the question? And that has to be two-thirds before we actually vote on the legislation?
Yes. So just for the new members here, I want to explain what calling the question is.
Okay.
Calling question, calling the question is to stop debate. You don't get to debate whether to call the question, and it takes five votes to pass. If it passes, debate stops and you go directly to the main motion.
Okay, thank you. Does everybody understand? Okay, so is there objection to passing the question? Calling the question.
I have objection from Yunt.
There is objection.
I have a comment, I, I have a comment I would like to make, so I would, I would object.
Okay, we do have objection. So then I guess you will have the people here go ahead and vote yes or no, and then you will talk to the two people online. Okay, so you have, all of you have your little, so vote yes or no?
So yes, we stop the debate?
Yes.
So if you want to go ahead and vote on your electronic device, please?
Yes, yes, if you want to stop debate.
Assemblymember Hale?
No.
Assemblymember Yunt?
Yes.
Okay.
It has failed with Assemblymember Sumner, two, Yunt, and Bernier in support. And I got to write this down real quick, Miss Madam Mayor.
Because you have to have.
You have to have five votes.
We have to have, two-thirds, we have to have more than majority. Okay, so then debate will continue.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that? Somebody on the line?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, yes. Oh, so I have, as, as a guy who builds roads, and this is a comment, not a question, as a guy who builds roads, I would love nothing more than to have 100 miles of road, go to bed tomorrow, and have, and have work. But I have a feeling, I have, I feel that ADA has not upheld their end of the bargain on the public engagement. One, virtual open house and half a dozen, uh, community council and Fish and Wildlife meetings does not satisfy the public engagement requirements for me. And so I don't under, what I don't understand is why the Matsu Borough needs to do the public engagement for them, needs to do their job. But I have a feeling that if we don't do it, no one else will. So with reservations, I am going to support this third-phase MOU with the hope and expectation that ADA does a much better job of public engagement in the next phase. Thank you.
Yes. Assemblyman Nowers, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the next meeting, and I'd like to speak to that motion, if I may.
So that would be on the 21st? Okay, go ahead and speak to your motion.
Just given the amount of concerns and questions that it gives, Assemblymembers a chance to do, to get some of those answered, because I feel like we should wholeheartedly support this and not sort of still have questions in our mind. And then, secondly, what I'd like to see is maybe that would give ADA and borough staff time to tell us what that public engagement should look like, could look like, because I'm not clear at all. And I, I agree with Assemblymember Hale that, that at least the perception is that public engagement has not been robust. So if, if we could come back on the 21st and we have a chance to get those questions answered, and also have a sense of what that public process would look like, that would make it much easier for me to vote on this. So I'm moving to postpone until December 21st.
Okay. Discussion on her motion to postpone until the 21st? Okay. All righty, so I guess we vote, right? Okay. Uh, I don't, on a motion to postpone?
It's table.
Yeah. Go ahead, put your mic, mic on, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
You know, this is just taking it to start the permitting. And every time they go through the permitting process, like the baseline environmental studies, the fish and wildlife, all that, isn't that going to give the public more opportunity to speak out and get awareness to the public? Every time it goes through another stage, isn't this just going to be a, a snowball adding more and more layers to it to where more, I never heard of this before, you know, before this election. I never even paid attention to the, or heard about it, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at. And I have a good feeling that you're going to hear more and more about it. So then I believe that's going to really give a chance for more public testimony.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone?
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Assemblyman Yunt. I, I think Stephanie said he's on the right track here. We, if we give this two more weeks, it's not going to make or break a project that we're, we're thinking is going to go to construction in 2028. It would give a chance for, for a little bit more public process, some more testimony. It would give us a chance as Assemblymembers to reach out to the ADA Board directly, work with them, which I would like to do personally myself, ask more questions, get more answers. And so in lieu of the time and where things, where we're at with things this evening, I, I do think it's a good idea. It's two weeks. We're not, we're not talking about postponing it indefinitely or even pushing it off until springtime. It's, it's, it's a great idea. So I, I will support Stephanie in this two-week delay.
Further discussion? All righty, so I guess we're ready to vote then. So if you vote for yes would mean that you will have this on your agenda on the 21st. No would mean that it would come back to the table for a decision this evening.
Assemblymember Yunt?
Yes.
Assemblymember Hale?
Yes.
It passed with Assemblymembers Sumner, two, and Bernier opposed. Okay, so that, that will be on our agenda for the 21st. Okay, so, oh, sure.
Madam Mayor, if I may, to the Assembly, just to be clear, if the intent is to just create time for the Assembly to do research and ask questions, I think that's wonderful. If you have a specific expectation of me or staff in terms of getting information for you, I would request that you make that clear to me, because I'm going to be candid and say I'm not completely clear what you want me to do in terms of getting you ready for two weeks from today. So if you have, maybe you could bring that up in your comments or something, or get with me offline. But, I mean, I'm sure I'm going to get a call from Allen tomorrow, and I'm really not sure what to tell him, to be perfectly honest. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman, I mean, Assemblywoman?
Is it okay to state it now, since our ADA folks are here and they probably want to get on the road in terms of what the specific request is? That the manager just asked for?
It's up to the mayor.
Now, what did you want to do?
Just to say what the specific request is now, why ADA folks are in the room, because I know they're going to leave.
Meeting from the Assembly, but did, are you asking for questions from the Assembly to ADA or to the manager?
I was just going to state what my specific request was for the manager to work with ADA to, to show us what that public process would look like, whether it's meetings that the borough holds or as part of the EIS process. I'm just looking for clarity on what public input ability will be on this moving forward. That's my specific request.
Yeah, we're still to be, I think the manager has asked for your input. I don't know that that needs to be continued, more debate right here at the table. He asked you, he asked each one of you to get in touch with him. And so I guess I'd like to honor that. Okay? And so, all righty, so the next item on our agenda is?
The consent agenda, Madam Mayor.
Resolution number 21-124?
Actually, it's the entirety of the consent agenda that wasn't pulled, and then we go to the individual items.
Okay, so that was just Resolution 21-133. Is that right?
That was the only one so far that we've acted on, correct?
Right.
So the rest of the consent agenda that hasn't been pulled off is Resolution 21-133, a resolution amending the scope of work for project number 10188, Fund 435 to install Americans with Disabilities compliant door openers at the animal care facility and authorizing an extension of the project to June 30th, 2023. AM 21119, acceptance of late filed and retroactive senior citizen and disabled veteran exemption applications. AM 21120, approval of the contract extension to February 26, 2022 for the contract, for contract number 2129P with Respec Company LLC for a metropolitan planning organization coordinator, AM 21122, approval of contract extension for bid, 21145B with Western Construction Equipment LLC for a final completion date of August 31st, 2022 for the Donnell Street and Sapphire Road Improvement Projects. AM 21123, approval of change order number one with Madeniska Telephone Association to increase the purchase order allowance in the amount of $32,583.53 for Birch Lake Drive, Sims Road, Spruce Court Improvement Projects.
Deputy Mayor, would you move the consent agenda, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Is there any objection? Okay, hearing none, and the consent agenda is approved. And now we'll go to Resolution, Resolution 21-124, is that the first one?
It is, Madam Mayor. A resolution approving state legislative priorities, priorities, sorry, priorities for fiscal year 2023, and that was pulled by Assemblymember Sumner.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
I have to move it first, right? Yeah. Uh, Madam Mayor, I move to adopt, uh, Resolution 21-124, and I have an amendment to offer.
Okay, go ahead with your amendment. Okay.
So I move to amend Resolution 21-124, and IM number 21-240 as follows. In the IM, by inserting the Knick Arm Crossing at the end of the list on page one, and in the resolution, by inserting the project under Borough Action Priorities, page one, as the fourth bullet point, with the following description. Knick Arm Crossing funds to be determined by ADOT and PF. The Knick Arm Crossing will provide connectivity between the state's two largest population centers, and their road networks, ports, airports, and rail corridors. The KAC will provide a more direct alternate route from the MSB to Anchorage and stimulate growth in the southern portion of the Matanuska City and Borough. Socioeconomic studies performed for the MSB indicate that this area will experience significant growth, and investment in infrastructure to support that growth should begin now, in order to avoid costly highway expansion, as is currently being experienced on the Knick Goose Bay Road, Parks Highway, and Glen Highway corridors.
Discussion on Deputy Mayor Sumner's amendment. Any objections to his amendment? Okay, any objection then to Resolution 21-1- Oh, she have another amendment? Okay.
Uh, I move to amend Resolution 21-124, and IM 21-240 as follows. Under Borough Action Priorities, in both the IM on page two and the resolution on page two, replace the language from "support for the Alaska Health Transformation Project" with the word "support for user-friendly, transparent healthcare pricing, including adoption of a state all-payer claims database." And it just, this is just to clarify what our intent is, to support user-friendly, transparent healthcare pricing.
Okay. Objections to Assemblywoman Nowers' amendment? Hearing none. The amendment is passed, and then Hale, Assemblyperson Hale, you have amendment also?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I would like to apologize for not had provided this in writing before the meeting. Um, these long itches and 12-hour shifts are, are, uh, pretty hectic, so, uh, but I would move to amend both the resolution and the IM under action priorities by adding a new heading, H, to read "Support for Jonesville Public Use Area. The Alaska Legislature established the JPUA as an unfunded mandate. Funds should be appropriated to allow DNR to draft and implement a management plan." Um, and I have sent the wording to the clerk by text.
Oh, okay, now she sees it, okay. Is there any objection to that amendment? Okay, hearing no objection, then that amendment is passed also. Do we have any more amendments to Resolution 21-124? Okay, is there any objection to passing Resolution 21-124 as amended? Okay? If not, then the legislation has passed. The next one is Resolution 21-125.
A resolution approving the federal legislative priorities for 2023, and that one was also pulled by Assemblymember Sumner.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Sumner?
Uh, I move to adopt Resolution 21-125.
Okay, and you have an amendment, sir?
And I have an amendment.
Okay.
I move to amend Resolution 21-125, and IM number 21-241 as follows. In the IM, by inserting the Knick Arm Crossing as project number five, page one, and renumbering the projects thereafter. And in the resolution, by inserting as project number five, page four, with the following description, and renumbering the projects thereafter, Knick Arm Crossing funds to be determined by ADOT, ADOT and PF. The Knick Arm Crossing will provide connectivity between the state's two largest population centers and their road networks, ports, airports, and rail corridors. The KAC will provide a more direct alternate route from the MSB to Anchorage and stimulate growth in the southern portion of the Matanuska City and Borough. Socioeconomic studies performed for the Mat, uh, MSB indicate that this area will signi- will experience significant growth and infrastruc- investment in infrastructure to support that growth should begin now, in order to avoid costly highway expansion, as is currently being experienced on the Knick Goose Bay Road, Parks Highway, and Glen Highway corridors.
Is there any objection to that amendment? Hearing no objection, that amendment then is passed. Uh, any further amendments to Resolution 21-125? Okay, so before you then is, uh, Resolution 21-125 as amended, is there any objection to passing that resolution? Hearing none, then Resolution 21-125 has passed. Alrighty, and let's see, what's the next item? No unfinished business?
Now, we got two IMs that were polled-
Okay.
-under the consent agenda. The next one is AM 21-118, Assembly Regular and Joint Meeting Scheduled for 2022, pulled by Assembly, Assemblymember Sumner.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
I move to adopt AM 21-118, and I have an amendment.
Okay.
I move to amend AM 21-118 by the November 15th regular meeting and election certification, by moving the November 15th regular meeting and election certification to November 22nd.
Is there, it is because, um, our election is late-
Yeah.
-in 2022.
So this would allow more than one week for, yeah, processing.
Clerk's office needs that additional time. Is there any objection to that amendment? Okay, then the amendment passes. Uh, any objections to the AM 21-118 as amended? No objection, so that legislation passes. Then the next one you have?
Is AM 21-121, a Ward of Proposal Number 22038P to Burns and McDonald, and the contract amount not to exceed $120,000 annually, to provide engineering consulting services for the central landfill, and that was pulled by Assemblymember McKee.
Okay. Do you wanna move?
So is it my, do I talk about that now, or what?
You need to move it.
Yeah, you need to move, you need to move it, and then I'll give, allow you to discuss it.
I move.
Okay. AM 21-121.
Yep.
Okay, now you, now these, tell us what, you either wanna make an amendment, or you, what, what do you wanna do with that?
I just wanted to speak to it, because I had some questions about it. When I was out campaigning, I told people that I was gonna want the Borough to spend money as if it were coming out of their very own pocket, and then I look at the fact that we have certified professional engineers on staff who are certified professional engineers, yet we're gonna go out and use a consulting firm to do something which I think those folks ought to be able to do in-house, that just looks like redundant to me, and I hear it a lot. Like, whenever, oftentimes when something will come up, the staff of the people who are, I don't, no offense, attorneys or whatever, whatever it would be, well, let's, let's consult somebody about that. No, let's don't. We're paying these folks lots of money, I'm assuming. Uh, why aren't you doing it? Why don't you guys do, I don't-
Can I ask us for a staff report?
Yeah.
To address, okay. Thank you, sir.
Terry Dolan, Director of Public Works. Through, through the mayor, to Assemblywoman McKee, these engineers that were, uh, asking to hire are very highly specialized engineers that, with expertise in landfill operations, specifically in, uh, operating a, uh, gas disposal plant that we have as part of our operation, in, uh, gas-to-energy operations that we're looking at in the future, in leachate collection and disposal, in cell design, and self-filling operations. So these are very highly specialized types of engineering skills, and these funds will buy us access to this firm that has expertise in all of these things. If we wanted to add engineers that had these skills onto our staff, it would be far more expensive for us to do that. So this is the low-cost option. The engineers that we have on staff, there's three of them that I'm aware of. Uh, two of them are full-time, and one is a part-time, on-call temporary employee. Um, and those engineers are, uh, civil engineers that are focused on road construction and road-related issues, horizontal construction.
So this is an annual thing? An annual fee that these folks are doing?
Yes, ma'am, this is something that we do, uh, every year. This, I think this one goes for five years, but we renew it every year. The first year's a little bit longer, because we're in the middle of a fiscal year right now. So it's like a year and a half for the first, uh, segment, and then it's a year long every year after that.
So you're gonna keep these guys pretty busy, these consulting guys?
Uh, potentially. We won't necessarily spend all of these funds, but if we need their services, you're authorizing us up to the amount that's in the legislation to purchase those services from that company.
And so if you don't use them very much at all, I mean, does that, does it still $120,000?
No, it is not.
All right, so it's kind of like an ad hoc thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
I'm right with that.
Is that address, do you have further questions regarding your pulling of the amendment?
I don't know how I'm supposed to say this, but what he just said convinced me that this was an okay thing to do, so.
So, so you're ready for me to ask if there's any other objections to the passing?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other obje- objections to the passing of AM 21-121? Okay, seeing none, then AM 21-121 has been approved, or passed, whatever the terminology is. We're done with it. That's the bottom line. Alrighty, um, so now we're on to unfinished business, which there-
Introduction, oh, yeah, there's no one to finish.
Yeah, no unfinished business, and there are no vetoes. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, introductions.
Introduction for public hearing on December 21st, our ordinance 21-115, ordinance 21-116 with accompanying Resolution 21-129, ordinance 21-17, and ordinance 21-118, ordinance 21-119 with accompanying Resolution 21-132, and Resolution 21-130.
Deputy Mayor, would you move the introductions, please?
Um, I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk.
Set the public hearing for-
Sorry, and set the public hearing for, um, December 21st, 2021.
Okay. Is there any discussion regarding moving those items and sending them for public hearing on the 21st of December of 2021? Is there any objections? Okay, having, hearing none, the legislation is introduced. Okay, the vacancy report. Deputy Mayor, would you move, please?
Doesn't the clerk usually read it? Oh.
Just move the approval, I guess, of the-
Yeah.
-vacancy report, right?
One second.
Oh, we gotta read it all? Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
I, I move to confirm the mayor's recommendations as follows. Agriculture Advisory Board, Kenneth Hoffman; Animal Care and Regulation Board, Patricia Hurt; Health and Social Services Board, Janet Engen; Matt, uh, MSB Fish and Wildlife Commission, Tim Hale; Port Commission, Robert Yount, with terms beginning January 1st, 2022. Enhanced 911 Advisory Board, Casey Cook, Zachary McCray; Local Emergency Planning Commission, or Committee, Casey Cook, Donna Anthony; Port Commission, Robert Brown; Transportation Advisory Board, Joshua Cross; Big Lake RSA Number 21, Greg Quinton.
Okay. Hearing those appointments, does anybody have any objection? Okay, hearing no objection, the vacancy report is approved. Uh, there is no other new business, no other, no, no, no new business at all. Uh-huh, okay, the next item is the referrals. Um, we are at referrals, is there any objection to taking each referral separately? We have the three, the one on the outdoor shooting facilities, the one for the, um, conditional use for the gravel, and the, uh, third one is, uh, for, to exclude the conditional use. So, do you wanna take them all together, or do you wanna take them separately? What's the wishes of the Assembly? Deputy Mayor?
Se- separately, please, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so the first one, then, if I can have the clerk read the first one into the minutes, please?
Ordinance 22-001, and ordinance repealing MSB 17.668, outdoor shooting facilities.
Okay. Um, Deputy Mayor, would you move?
I move to refer ordinance 22-001 to the Planning Commission for 90 days.
Discussion regarding referring that? Councilwoman, no, I do that all the time. I don't know why you don't do it to the guys, I'm sorry.
This will pack our chambers again, so, um, that's something you guys like to do. I, I won't oppose this, I, I do feel like we, we just passed this. I haven't heard of any complaints, there were concerns about, um, keeping shooting facilities from operating. Fairbanks has this, and I don't, I haven't seen any or heard about any, um, but it sounds like there's some room for discussing whether there's exemptions in the rural areas, which might be different, so if, um, the makers of this motion still wanna move forward with it, I won't oppose it.
Any other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanna make sure the Assembly is very careful, you're not debating what's in the legislation, you're debating whether referring it or not. This legislation is not in front of the Assembly to actually debate. Only the debate can happen is whether you want to refer it or not. I know that makes it really tight, but-
Okay, so, it's whether you wanna defer or not, it's not whether you wanna, you know, spell shooting range differently than what it's presented, okay? All right, Assemblyperson McKee?
I'm really new at this, so when you just said refer it, what does that mean?
It goes to the Planning Commission for a series of inputs, probably some public hearings, and then they come back, they bring it back to the Assembly, you know, saying, yes, they've changed this, or that, or whatever, and then the Assembly looks at the legislation again, and we may change it back to what it originally was, or we have further input, or whatever. So it's just, and it's, I, maybe I should have the attorney speak to it again. Uh, it is a state, I mean, it's a law because of a case state, but, Mr. Attorney, would you, um, restate?
Yeah, this is what I made reference to during the attorney comments, oh, uh, four, four and a half hours ago or so. Due to the way the state law is, um, whenever the Assembly is either adopting or amending land use regulations, you have to pause in your consideration of doing that, wait for the Planning Commission to either, just as the mayor said, hold public hearings, gather public input, pass resolutions, and give you advice and recommendations on what you're proposing to do. At the end of the day, it still remains an Assembly decision to pass it, not pass it, amend it, adopt it, whatever, whatever you decide to do, but it must go through the Planning Commission process before you, before you do that. The Planning Commission has to be given an opportunity, and so the code, the default number of days under the code is 90 days, because that's a reasonable amount of time.
Any further discussion on the referral of ordinance 22-001? Any objections to referring? Hearing no objection, the motion passes. Then, go ahead, Madam Clerk, with ordinance 22-002.
An ordinance amending MSB 1730, conditional use permit for earth materials extraction activities to allow for an exemption of 20,000 cubic yards annually without a permit.
Okay.
I move to refer, uh, ordinance 22-002 to the Planning Commission for 90 days.
All right, discussion. And Deputy Mayor?
Ma- Madam Mayor, I believe I may have a conflict of interest on this. If it were to pass, I would very probably- If it were to pass, I would very probably begin selling gravel.
Okay.
Because there would be no permit.
I agree that that would present a conflict to you, so I'll excuse you from the table. Is there any further discussion on the referral? And remember, we're not discussing the pros and cons of the legislation. We're just talking about doing the referral. Okay? Yes?
Thank you, through the mayor. I object to, to referring this. I think we heard from the public and from the industry that they don't support it. In my experience, these referrals have been extremely rare to the Planning Commission and have been done when we have an issue where there's, that we really need guidance on. We heard from across the board. And I think we would have heard from more folks if this hadn't just popped up on Tuesday. So I think at this point, it's not prudent to, to refer something that we've gotten broad opposition to.
Okay. So, anybody else have an objection? Okay, so Madam Clerk, I guess we will ask the Assembly members to vote on the referral. Yes, if you want to refer it to the Planning Commission, no if you don't. And I guess if the noes are in the majority, then it dies. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Yeah. Yes. Assemblyperson McKee?
My voting thing has been on green, yes.
Let me reset it and then everybody will have to re-vote, I apologize. Okay, everybody go ahead and re-vote.
Okay, so if I vote no, that means I listen to the people in the audience and I'm voting no. I don't want it like this.
It means you don't want to refer it, is what it means.
You're just not referring. It doesn't mean what your position is on the legislation.
Okay, got it.
Okay, Assemblymember Yount?
Yes.
Assemblymember Hale?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have-
It is a tie vote, Madam Mayor, and you get to choose to break the tie or not.
Okay, I'll go ahead and refer it.
Okay, let me write this down really quick. I got to write down everybody's vote, I apologize.
No problem.
Can you please read the votes into the record?
Sure. So the votes in favor were Assemblymember Yount, Assemblymember Hale, and Assemblymember Too. The ones that were not were Assemblymember McKee, Assemblymember Nowers, and Assemblymember Bernier. The mayor broke the tie with yes.
Should I go get Deputy Mayor? Okay, we'll just have a minute to take and bring back the Deputy Mayor and then we'll go on to the next ordinance. Okay, the next ordinance is ordinance 22-003. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending MSB 1730-020, conditional use permit for earth materials extraction activities, applicability to exclude the conditional use permit requirement within the boundaries of the central landfill.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I moved to refer ordinance 22-003 to the Planning Commission for 90 days.
Is there any objections to the referral? Oh, yes. Assemblyperson Nower, go ahead.
Mayor, so I would also object to referring this. I think the idea of exempting the borough from rules that any private operator has to comply with is just a bad idea in general. So the idea that we need input on that from the Planning Commission, and we have other ways to solve this problem we're trying to get at.
Further discussion?
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I'm going to support this and here's why. It gives us 90 days to discuss it further. I do not think for one moment that Assemblymember Sumner is trying to go around the public process or put the matsubro on a pedestal. This is a subject that's came up quite a bit in the last year. We've probably debated refuse more than anything, to be honest with you. But we've never debated this. And so I understand what Jesse is trying to do. He's simply trying to help the borough staff lower the price of, price of refuse across the board for all of our residents and taxpayers. It is one of the services that everybody uses. Everybody uses refuse. And so I would like to see what the Planning Commission takes in, comment-wise. I would like to see what they say and what they refer to us and give us time to look at this very in-depth. And again, like I said, I'm, I'm not trying to help get around the public process. I actually want to help make it stronger. And I believe with this referral, we can help do that. So I will support the referral.
Okay. Assemblyperson Hale, did you have some input, sir?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to support this referral for the same reason I supported the previous referral. And that is that the public process is very important. And I think every, I think every ordinance that deals with land use that someone takes the time to craft deserves, deserves to be heard. So I'm going to support the public process and, and vote yes to refer this.
Any further discussion? So we do have an objection, so we'll ask the Assemblypeople to please vote. Yes would mean that you would refer it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. No would mean that you wouldn't and that it would die.
Assemblymember Hale?
Yes.
Assemblymember Yount?
Yes.
Oh.
Did you exclude yourself?
Assemblymember Sumner?
Yes.
It passed with Assemblymember Nowers opposed.
Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is reconsideration, which we do have. Assemblyperson Yount, or you have a motion to reconsider, is that correct? Or should I have the, should I have, do you, the clerk, read this into the record first? Or what, what's the correct procedure, Madam Clerk?
You might have a motion to postpone this to the next meeting, so let's ask.
Okay, okay, so Assemblyperson Yount, do you have a motion to reconsider?
I do and I'd like to speak to it. So I, I fully support, I actually fully support George's intention here. I would like to get some updates. I know, I know what the, you know, the commission does is online and available, but we have other people that come and give us updates. I guess really, my reconsideration was I wanted, I wanted to give myself more time to educate myself on the process and everything involved. I have some very close friends that, and, and I want to, I want to put out there that I think the Wildlife Commission, Fish and Wildlife Commission is doing an amazing job. I have some friends that live on Cloudy Lake that have been there for six years. And then I just built a home for a client on the same lake. My friends that have been there for six years are very avid outdoorsmen. They use the lake constantly. They've actually never seen a salmon spawning in the lake. And then we just replaced the culvert at one end of the lake. And now they have seen hundreds and hundreds just this year for the first time. And so I know that the commission's doing a good job there, the ones that recommended, and we are replacing culverts as we go. I, I think that, on the flip side of that, I think Mr. McKee has some valid points. I, I think it would be nice to get an update from them. From time to time, is quarterly fair? I'm not sure who it would be to give us that. And this might be a better question for Manager Brown, but who that we would ask to give us that update? I mean, I, I guess I still have a few questions, which is why I reconsidered this. So if Manager Brown could speak to what he thinks would be reasonable for an update. You know, if quarterly is not reasonable, what would be? And then who is it that we would task specifically with giving us that update at the Assembly?
Madam Mayor?
Assembly, Assemblymember Yount, do, do you have a motion to reconsider? I, we've heard your dissertation, sir, but we need to know-
Good point of order. Yes, I do have a motion to reconsider. And I do not need to speak to it anymore, because I just did, I apologize. I got, I got carried away, I apologize.
George is in the audience, he's jumping up and down for joy. It's hard to know with George, but I think he is. Go ahead, go ahead, Assemblymember Yount. So, you, you do want to-
I would-
You do want to move-
I would like to move the reconsideration for a vote. And then let Manager Brown help decide.
That's enough, okay. Is there, is there discussion on, on the motion to reconsider? Any objection to the motion to reconsider? Deputy Mayor, you have objection to the motion to reconsider? Okay. All right. So, any other discussion? Okay, so, the, a yes would say that you agree with Assemblyman Yount, that you would like to reconsider the motion that was passed at the last Assembly meeting regarding Resolution 21-128. A no would mean that you wanted the previous action to stand. So, if everybody would go ahead and vote, please? Does everybody understand? Okay, so what happened at the last meeting? Resolution 21-128 passed, okay? And then afterward, Assemblyperson Yount was in favor of that. And that was the majority. And after it passed, then, I don't know, it was 24 hours or a couple of days or something, he thought, well, maybe we should reconsider that. That there were some things that, at that time, the other Assemblyman, McKee, had brought up. And so he asked for that motion to be reconsidered. So what that would mean, that if you're going to vote yes to reconsider that motion, then that motion, the next item, if that's the majority of all of you now, then that would come back tonight in the next discussion. And then you could change that, amend that motion, or whatever, okay? Or you could vote it down, okay? So, will you all please vote? Then yes would be that you are in support of the reconsideration of that motion that was passed two weeks ago, I guess it was, huh? Have already voted? All right, be quiet, Edna.
Assemblymember Yount?
Yes.
Assemblymember Hale?
Yes.
Okay.
It has passed with Assemblymember Sumner and Bernier opposed. So we are back to the main motion again.
Okay. So the main motion, then, we need to have discussion. Let's see, in, in the packet, there should be that original resolution, right? So if people wanted to make corrections to that. So I think it's all the way bound to the very end of your, the very last item in the reconsideration in your book, the very, very last item. And so if there were changes you want to make, that, that item now is on the floor for-
I think we probably should-
May I?
Oh, okay, yes, go ahead. And I will ask-
Thank you.
Mr. Brown to answer who's going to make the report, et cetera. Or you go ahead, Assemblyperson Yount, and then-
And that's all I wanted to ask is, you know, again, I want to, I want, I want to acknowledge that what Mr. McKee was trying to do, I actually believe is a great idea. I think quarterly might be a little bit excessive. Plus, we never defined who exactly it would be that would give us that report. And so I was just hoping that Manager Brown could help us get headed in the right direction here and then we go to a vote.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through the mayor to Mr. Yount. I believe it's pretty straightforward. I think Mr. McKee had proposed that there would be an emphasis placed on wildlife, not just fish, and that the commission would provide a quarterly report. A member from the Planning Department provides staff support to that commission. So the reality is, he'll probably be doing the work and generating it, but it will say what the Fish and Wildlife Commission as a body would want it to say. So I see the, the commission is an Assembly commission, they're here to advise you. And I think, you know, when we look at some of the other reports that we do quarterly, seems reasonable. I don't know that there'll be remarkable develop, developments from one quarter to the next. But I think that's, would not be hard to capture and communicate in written form to the Assembly.
And just to reiterate, so you had said that would be with the help of, or the, the Borough Planning Commission would help with that report, you said, correct?
Through the mayor to Mr. Yount, no, sir, not the Planning Commission, the Borough Planning Department that was at, that actually supervises. Ted Ishide provides staff support to that commission. He would be the one likely generating the reports and communicating at the, at the, you know, under the guidance of the commission.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry that I didn't bring this up, you know, I didn't ask that question at the last meeting. That right there makes me feel more comfortable on this. I was concerned that we were going to overrun the commission, knowing now that our staff would support him and I have full confidence in Alex's department. And knowing that they would be involved and help support the commission and that, I'm actually comfortable with exactly what we passed at the last meeting. I just was not aware that borough staff would support the commission, if that makes sense. So, we'll have to go vote anyways and let other people speak to it, but that makes me feel much more comfortable. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Before you start, though, we have like 17 minutes and we still have to do-
I will be very brief.
Okay, thank you.
I will be, I will be very brief. I, I have no problem with quarterly reports from the Fish and Wildlife Commission. I buried against this originally because of the influence that we did not spend enough time on wildlife issues, which we do spend time on. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor, did you have some comments?
Oh, I was just going to say that we have a lot of new members. So I think that quarterly meetings, quarterly reports from the Board of Salmon might not be unreasonable to help socialize the new members to what it is they do. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any further discussion? Okay, is, oh.
One issue I have is the quarterly reports don't seem like that much work since they already take really extensive minutes. I know it was noted they don't meet in the summer, so that quarterly report might be short. The one issue I had with this is that it directs them to become more active in wildlife issues. It seems like a very, I don't know what that would mean to them. I would propose striking that. And then based on the quarterly reports, if the Assembly feels like there aren't issues being addressed, those could go back to the commission. So I just propose striking that part that tells them become more active in analyzing recommended measures affecting wildlife. We haven't even attempted to just go and talk to them and nobody's mentioned specific things that they've ignored. So it seems extraneous.
Okay, so there is an objection and there is an amendment. And Deputy Mayor, did you want to speak to the amendment?
So I'd move a secondary amendment that we then rename the Board to the Board of Salmon.
The, the secondary amendment has to actually amend the primary amendment. And that is not what that secondary amendment's doing, I apologize.
That's fine.
You'd have to wait until after we adopt this amendment or reject this amendment and then you would have another primary amendment to the main motion. Okay? All righty. So the amendment before you is to strike the emphasis on wildlife. And do we know how many places that is in there? Or you're just leaving that up to the clerk to find?
Excuse me, could you reset my thing here, my button?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
There is a number of different areas, I do believe. I'm looking at the resolution right now.
Okay.
Bear with me. There is, on the first page, there's a whereas it appears that the WC has not been inactive or engaged in the area of wildlife and specifically game animals. And whereas wildlife and game- And whereas wildlife and game are of importance to the residents of the Magnus Kusitna Borough for the same reasons as fish. And whereas wildlife and game are an important source of food, recreation, and business in the Magnus Kusitna Borough. And whereas the Magnus Kusitna Borough's animal sees a need for the FWC to become more active, engaged in the area of wildlife and game. Whereas opportunities for hunting while minimizing game conflicts are important goals in the Magnus Kusitna Borough. Whereas the FWC has the expertise and know-how to recommend and advocate for interests of the Magnus Kusitna Borough within the areas of fish and wildlife. And then it's also in the now therapeutate resolve.
Okay, so that would be the number?
If I can jump in real quick.
Yeah, sure.
I was the, on behalf of former Assemblymember McKee, I was the scribbler. He handed me his notes, and I wrote this up. This resolution is directing them to get, to do exactly what Assemblymember Nowers is proposing to take out and report on those activities quarterly. It's not just come talk to us quarterly. It's a resolution directing them to get more involved in wildlife and report on those efforts quarterly. It's not just report quarterly. You wouldn't need a resolution to do that. If you just want them to report quarterly, you could just tell Mike.
If the amendment passes, we don't have anything.
Well, you should just vote it down if you, if you were gonna vote that amendment. It's gonna make everyone's life easier to just vote it down if you don't like it.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and withdraw it, but I would object to this because we never even sat down and talked to them and, and I've experienced that, commission. They do a lot of hard work, and if we came to them with a specific issue, I knew they would address it. I will withdraw.
So yes vote says we're voting for them to be more involved and give the quarterly report. And no, okay, what?
She has withdrawn, so what you have before you is the original Resolution 21-128, which passed the Assembly two weeks ago. So is there any objection?
Yes, I object.
Okay, so we have two objections then to passing Resolution 21-128. Okay, will the Assembly please proceed to vote?
So yes, I'm not sure where your voting is.
The voting is to approve, we're back to approving the original motion for the resolution that passed two weeks ago. Right, she withdrew the amendment, so the motion, I mean, the item of legislation before you is exactly as it is. Yep, 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 yep. So a yes is just to reinforce what happened a couple of weeks ago, and a no would be to reject the resolution, okay?
Assemblymember Yount.
Yes.
Assemblymember Hale.
No.
I'm sorry? Wait, I'm sorry. What did he say? Thank you.
Said no.
Thank you. It passed with Assemblymember Hale and Nowers opposed.
All righty, the next item on our agenda is Mayor, Assembly, and Staff Comments. And I guess we take, it says, take comments from the manager, attorney, clerk, and Assembly. Go for it, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna take up the next nine minutes. I'm just kidding. I do want to, I do want to say a word about the road package appropriation. So the $10 million grant that was appropriated, I wanted the Assembly to know. Our Public Works, Finance, and Purchasing Departments are working on developing requests for proposals for design for all of the projects that were recently approved by voters. So those are under development, and will be out on the streets soon. Obviously, we will need funding in each of those projects' accounts to actually award the design. But we will be moving forward concurrently as we continue to look at how we solve the funding problem. At this point, we're not intending to sell bonds in the near future because many of these projects won't go to construction until probably 2023. But this does put some funding into the account, and I wanted to make sure that you were aware that there is, Finance Department's developing legislation that will be introduced at the next regular meeting to appropriate additional funding into those project accounts so that we can move forward with design and whatnot to get those projects all moving forward. So that work is happening in the background. I just wanted to make you aware of that. And secondly, thanks, Caleb. You guys did a pretty knockout job with the telephone support tonight. That was a lot of testimony. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Welcome again to the new members, Mrs. Mayor, Assemblymembers. Baptism by fire tonight. The December 7th meeting dawned on me that with the state legislature, I'm sorry, January 7th meeting, that is Russian Orthodox Christmas, I won't be in attendance. However, somebody from my staff will be there, just to make you all aware. And the other thing that happened on December 7th in 1787, Delaware was the first state to ratify the U.S. Constitution.
Okay, Clerk?
I don't have anything unless we want to extend the meeting because we've got eight minutes for Assemblymembers.
Can we wrap it up in eight minutes? All right, Assemblyperson Armbrer, go.
Thank you.
Right here, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Assemblyperson Two? Okay, Assemblyperson McKee?
Bless your hearts for being so kind. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Nowers?
I'm gonna take all seven minutes of each, Jesse, with clarity. What was what the manager asked? I was looking for some clarity on what the public process would be because that was, the public referred repeatedly on the Weshusitna, that they don't feel like they've got enough input. So if we can get some clarity before the next meeting, that would make me a lot more comfortable moving forward that project. So if that makes sense, the manager and I can talk offline. Also, I think it would be great as part of the, before the gravel meeting to have some information on reclamation of gravel pits in the valley, which came up, and just what the rules are as far as mining into the, into the water table and kind of the state of those things. I think that'd be good information for us to have. And then I'm already enjoying Ms. McKee. I noticed that she actually leaves her mic on, and George would never turn it off, so I can tell there's opposites tracked there. And thanks, everybody.
Okay, Assemblyperson Yount, comments, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to all the fellow Assemblymembers. It's not often that you see a 7-0 vote, but thank you for supporting me in my amendment tonight for moving some of the money over towards the road bond package on the state grant. I look forward to the next meeting when the borough staff brings legislation, showing us some other revenue that the manager and I have discussed, that we could be moving into that fund. This is the direction I want to see us headed in, a very fiscally responsible one, where we, we watch every dollar and every cent like it was on our own. So I feel like we, we made a big step in that direction tonight, and I'm very grateful for everybody for supporting me in my amendment. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Hale.
Congratulations to Deputy Mayor Sumner. Thank you very much.
Okay, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Sumner, comments?
I'd like to thank Assemblymember Hale. And I think from a lot of the public comment testimony on the referral for the solid waste facility, the dump, I think people are a little confused on what is being proposed, or at least what is my intention as far as that goes. I'm not intending that we go out and mine the trails or anything like that. We, we have to dig very large holes in the ground so that we can fill them with garbage and that, you know, that the garbage takes up the volume of the gravel that comes out. We have to get rid of the gravel, too. Otherwise, we're gonna have a giant mountain down there. We just paid a million and a half dollars to dig gravel out that we're gonna then have to probably move around. And so we do have a problem, and if you read the attached IM, you know, it's about $50 million of expense could be offset down at the landfill by, by proactively selling the gravel out ahead of the holes that we have to dig anyway to fill with garbage. So, I mean, it really makes a lot of sense. I'm not, I'm not super enthusiastic, though, about the borough exempting itself from its own rules. I know that's happened as far as road construction goes in the past and some other, some other issues. I just don't see really a good solution to this issue. Otherwise, though, the, yeah. So what I would say is our CUP process is pretty restrictive. I mean, potentially, we should have just an amendment to the CUP process. But on the other hand, I would say, though, that a landfill is about the biggest nuisance you can have already. So, and our permitting requirements are already pretty extensive for the landfill. So I don't, I don't know that we add much more of a nuisance in that one specific location than already exists. So, so maybe it just isn't worth, or maybe, maybe it is worth exempting that from the CUP process, at least as far as the sale goes, because we already have to dig that stuff out of the ground. And I mean, if you're filling it with garbage, so that's pretty, that's a pretty big nuisance already. So, yeah, thanks.
All righty, my comment is, we made it, and we are journeying at 10, what, 57? Yeah.